Everyone, I'll call the meeting of the County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order where we are supporting community through quality public service. To begin our meeting, I will ask you to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll have a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. At this time, we take a little bit of time for a public comment period. This is an opportunity for citizens to appear before the board. Is anyone wanting to come before the board? So please sign in and with your name and address. Good morning.
I'm Mike Carlson. I live in Upper Houghville on Highway 61. I have a basic mantra that I'd like to share with you. Don't speak unless you can improve upon the silence. Maybe I should have stopped there, but nevertheless, let me share a few little thoughts that I have for you. I've been thinking about the issues that you face as for some time, you need to make timely decisions. You, of course, gather as much information as you can and seek advice to help you decide. The choices might include replace the thing with the same, if it's still available, tested replacement, or a little tested promising idea. Well, still, there would be concerns. You have lowest price, you have best value, quickest fix, local service, and more variables than you can imagine. May you do well as you have to find the best compromise. There is a second page here. Okay. I trust that you will make good decisions based on your reading of constituents, need of the county, budget concerns, and your heart. Thank you again as you continue in your poorly remunerated public service. Teriyana through the uppermost Cook County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Good morning.
Morning.
Arvis Thompson. We, the public, have heard you say that you want public input. You've said that for years. Under your current system, the public has a huge disadvantage in providing any pertinent, timely input. We find out on a Friday what's to be discussed or decided on Tuesday. That leaves Monday to try and connect with the staff who can answer the questions. Then we try to process and be ready for Tuesday's board. So let's say the public does get the information that they need to decide to speak at the board meeting. It's out of sync. The public input comes before the board's discussion of issues. Because it's out of sync, does that public input get heard or ignored? It doesn't always feel like you really hear or care about what the public may have to say. So the question is, does anyone take the public input seriously? An example, on today's agenda, there is an item dealing with the interview process for the county administrator. One piece is the personal interview. Should a Zoom interview be considered? Well, public sentiment seems to be no to Zoom. Zoom is impersonal. There's no eye contact. There's no reading of body language. There's no sense of personal response. There's no connection. The question is, how serious is this individual? Meeting who they would be working for should be of great importance to them if they are truly interested in the who, let alone the where. The other discussion surrounds the composition of the interview team. I'm sure you will be discouraged from adding citizen participation. We citizens have skills. We are open-minded. We are interested in what is good for all of us. Having citizen participation tells the interviewee that you are serious in your effort to find a person who will be responsive to the people of Cook County, not only the board and its Citizens will offer a different perspective. They have nothing to gain or lose, just an honest sense of who fits. Citizens will not be in a position in the future to feel loyalty or responsibility for the choice, should he be a good choice or a forfeit. To narrow a field of interviewers places a burden on the team to have to defend their choice in the future. Please consider adding citizens. You spent time, a good deal of time and money, getting this far. If you trust and follow the system you've already designed and can live with the outcome, citizens can give you another impartial perspective. After all, a citizen is only one vote away from a commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe there's nobody else in the audience who wish to come forward, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I do have some public comments.
Okay.
Do you want me to shut the lights?
I think I can read them. I have three emails that came in that were requested to be read during public comment. These are from Don Davison. I recently contacted a nationally-recognized professional real estate office asking for an evaluation of our home as a home. I also asked that they evaluate our home as a vacation rental. What a surprise. As a regular home, they said we were worth five, is that better? $529,000. As a VRBO or BNB, $668,000. This tells me that Cook County is purposely overvaluing homestead property, and this needs to stop. We're not all renting our properties out for short-term rentals. Look up our current tax evaluation. It's almost $700,000. The county is purposely screwing homestead owners with your tax policy. This needs to stop. Please make this public comment at the next county board meeting. People need to know how the county is actively involved in this process of overvaluing property and making our taxes higher than they should be. That email was followed by this one. We've lost so many friends who have moved away over the last three years. You know why? You and the county board have made it nearly impossible to live here. You keep trying more people, you keep hiring more people so you can say that our courthouse is too small. You keep taking homes off the homestead list so they can be vacation rentals. The increases in taxes are unsustainable, and you keep giving unjustified pay raises to county employees based on fraudulent studies. You don't owe your soul to the greedy people or to greedy employees. You owe your soul to your elected constituency. Please stop what you are doing. You are making it impossible for us to continue to live here, or pretty soon, you won't be able to live here either. Please make this public comment at your next meeting. That was followed by this email. I have just sent two emails. Please make sure that they are printed as part of the agenda, read aloud, and made part of the public record. Ann Sullivan has a history of ignoring emailed public comments. Please assure me that my views will be made public at the meeting.
Thank you. Has anyone else received any comments they would wish to read? Okay. And then the consent agenda items, we have claims and minutes and so on and so forth. Is anyone, excuse me, needing to go further into any of these? If not, I'll hear a motion to approve this whole. Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Support.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We, um...
Madam Chair, excuse me, if I could just make a comment on the consent agenda, you know, when I go through this and I look at it and coming in midstream, respectfully understanding there's been a lot of work that's been done, and then I come into it, and so I don't necessarily have a lot of background on it, but to the point of trying to be as open and helpful to allow the public to understand, well, we have a consent agenda. It's to facilitate processes, and we don't need to deal with everything because we have background to a lot of this, but there are those in the public that don't, and I don't know that our PAC necessarily puts these things into context. So the reason I bring it up simply to say is that, given the stewardship responsibly entrusted to us, if we streamline processes because we have a lot of things to deal with that we need to discuss, it would be good if there was some way that would make this easier to understand some of these things that we simply group together and make a decision on. So I think it's just a challenge for us to provide context for a lot of these things. If you can appreciate, you know, where I'm coming from on this, I think the public's at a disadvantage when we have a consent agenda, which I think is good to facilitate and process time, but I think it also is problematic in that there's a lot of things on there that the public's not aware of. And to the extent that we could help them understand some of these things too, then they can identify with our decisions when we do things.
Most of these things are hires or a permit or appointments, so if there's any large question, then you certainly can, as we say, pull it, and we'd have a more discussion later on.
No, I understand that, but still, I think even when we, you know, listen to what the public comments, you know, where they're smoring, there needs to be context on those things that people are questioning, and so that's what I'm saying. If we look at this, we see an outline, and we raise our hand, and we, you know, by motion, we approve them. I'm just saying if there's some way that we can clarify some of these things and put them in context, and they change, you know, from week to week. And there were questions that I had here, and because I'm coming in, we'll call it midstream, and I was able to have a discussion with Rowan this morning to put context for me, so I'm imagining if that's me, what about people that don't have context at all?
Mr. White?
To that end, I had requested, while, in fact, that we just identified that we are going to approve the hire of Emily Westerlin as Assistant County Attorney, just to list what the, I can't read, just to list what the items are, but then to Commissioner Gamble's statement, that's where the items should be polled if there's, I think a hire is pretty straightforward, but maybe it's not to the listening public or, you know, the where and why's. But like on this consent agenda, is the emergency management performance grant, that might be something that should have been polled, just to explain in two sentences what it is and what it's for. But we did not do that, but I do think we should, because there are some people that will get their information solely from, solely from listening to this if we speak into our microphone so they can hear us. So, because they won't read the newspaper, they won't listen to WTIP, they're not on Facebook, they are not on other things, there's no criticism, there's no statement one way or the other, but this is where they get their information. And so if we just say, well, we're hiring this person, and this person is retiring, if they need more information, we five are here. Our phone numbers are there. Give us a call or call the interim administrator at this point for more information. They have a responsibility to do their homework also. It's not totally our responsibility, but we do need to tell people what is in the consent, I think.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, in reference to the emergency management grant, like that item under consent agenda, I did connect with Mike Keport about that, and evidently it's something that is approved every year, and so that's why he felt it was more appropriate under consent agenda, and also, he was not going to be here today. But I guess I just share that, you know, I did connect with him and be like, you know, should this be not under consent agenda, and he felt it was appropriate there. So I just wanted to share that.
Right, and putting the agenda together, it's interim Watkins, myself, and Jana, so we make a point of maybe listing a little more information or at least saying, this is what we have on the agenda, and going through each item so that it's publicly announced. Is that what you're asking? Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, the emergency management grant would be a good example because I, as a commissioner, looking at it, and I see that emergency management grant, we're thinking, well, grant, that means money that's coming into the county that isn't going to affect the levy. But the fact of the matter is that, as is with many grants, it's a matching grant. That means therefore that those funds coming in, we have to agree to match that amount, which is $15,000-some dollars. So then my question is, was that built into the budget? And because it's an annual thing, we anticipate, and so we build it into our budget, but that's something that the public doesn't know, so if the procession is, perception is, is that this is money we're getting in, there is our responsibility to match that money. So it's things like that, just in full disclosure, it's helping people understand, and if we help people understand, then they can inform us as representatives of them, you know, because they're more informed. That's all. Just encouraging, how can we maybe help to make things clear? Thank you.
Good suggestion. We'll work on that in the future with Administrator Watkins. Because we have a public hearing at 9:00 AM, I want to be respectful of that.
Sure.
And so I'm going to move around a little bit because I know Robbie's here, and he's going to have a good detailed presentation, so I'm going to move around to Auditor Brady under 8A to talk about that, solid waste management.
So this is the discussion we've been having around North Shore Waste Project and the bonding for that, and the first step in setting a fee, a solid waste fee, in the statute, we're going to be following statute 400.08, and in that, we need to establish the service area. In this case, it'll be the entire county. So to follow this as a, you know, a regular process, you have to hold a public hearing. So today, this is just asking you to set the public hearing to establish the district as the county, and to set that public hearing on February 25th at 10:00 AM. And then at that meeting, after the public hearing, if you so decide, then you'll set another public meeting after that to actually set those fees that you've already looked at and discussed and agreed to, but this will formally fit the statute for the bonding.
Any questions or comments, Commissioner Gamble?
Madam Chair is willing to make a motion? If you're okay, open to that.
Okay, I'm your motion. Is there a second?
A motion to establish solid waste management services public meeting, public hearing that'll be February 25th, 2025, at 10:00 AM.
Support.
Any questions or comments?
I just had a question. Normally, we have public hearings at 9:00, and so I was wondering just the rationale for 10:00.
Yeah, the rationale is we have a public hearing set at 9:00 AM for the miscellaneous fees.
Okay.
Those regular ones, so.
So an hour.
Yeah, that'll give us enough time for whatever happens.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. And if you want to go on, there Brady about the Minnesota County Information System?
Sure. So that's one, I debated whether to put that on consent agenda because it's a fairly routine thing, but just given that it isn't something that comes up very often, that it should stay on the agenda here. But it's a simple change. We have an agreement with Minnesota County's Information Systems to host our, it's an IBM equipment that we used to, a large computer we used to have here, and then we decided, because they were offering this service, to have Emsys host that for us, so we don't have that in our building any longer, and many of the counties are doing that. It simplifies, they can work on that equipment there. The only change here is they're not able to keep that equipment at Itasca County, which is where Emsys is located. They've decided they can't host that anymore at Itasca, so they had to search for another location. The location is in Bemidji. It's called the Paul Bunyan's Communication Company in Bemidji, so they're simply changing our hosting agreement for that new location. The change in fees is very minor. And Rowan can explain this much better than I.
Yeah. Didn't we used to have Star Wars figures on the old computer in there or something? We had something, I think, that we set down there.
Former system administrator Kevin Twist liked Legos. There was Lego.
That was it? Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So my question was just that, because of the fee structure being what it is in our minutes here in the agenda, didn't, and you said it was negligible. It's about $20,000 now, and we've been paying about, what?
Not much, I don't know exactly, but not much different. And this is spread over several counties.
Yeah.
In a year's time, so it's a few dollars difference.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could, I would just add that it's a specialized facility. They're a data center, whereas who was hosting it formerly was Itasca County, and, you know, at kind of a great operational expense and some concern on their end, so I think this is a more appropriate fit. This is what they do, is they hold these types of systems and maintain it. It's their specialty, so I think it's...
Paul Bunyan Communications.
Paul Bunyan Communications, right. It's a data center, and it makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
My question is, MCIT is listed in here twice. Is that supposed to be MCIS?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised Minnesota County's Information System hosting agreement.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Well, we have a few minutes here, and I'm going to just skip way to the end because this is an important topic to be thinking about. We did not add on to the upcoming meetings about our legislative meeting coming up the end of this month, from the 25th to the 27th. And what we need to be thinking about in the next couple of weeks is, what are we going to talk to our legislators about? We will meet with Senator Haushard and with Representative Scraba, now that they're back at work physically, and we have found over the last couple, three years, is that when we go into their office, we are also with other counties, and we're all trying to get their attention. And so Commissioner Sullivan has put together a paper, and on that, we handed to them to say, please read this at your convenience, because we know that, you know, Lake County has concerns and Itasca and all that, so let's be thinking about what we think would be important to have our representatives, Senator, help us with. And we can send those to Rowan, and then we'll tabulate those at our last, before our last meeting, and have that discussion at our board meeting if there's anything else, and then we'll take that with us, because we want to make sure that we have the essence of time with them, but realizing we can't all talk individually at times. We have an overview of where we're from and maybe the top concern, but if you leave a piece of paper, they have time then to digest that after we leave. Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the important things also is to get input from department heads as they work with other groups through AMC, and we can look at what is realistic, given the session that we have and the times that we're working in. Also, it's very important to leave print material with the administrative assistance for both our senator and representatives. That is really critical, and if we can even send that in advance so they have an opportunity to think about the topics that we're going to discuss. Also, this Thursday, we have our community leadership group, and it's really critical. We go with one voice for Cook County that we're thinking about county government, but we're thinking about the other entities, the school district, the business community, the hospital, all the different entities, so that we are more likely to be heard.
Yes, include everyone. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure we may be done this in the past, but it's advisable when you reference the fact with our leadership meeting, when we look at internally all of the different aspects within, you know, Cook County governance, but when we look at, to your comment about Lake County and the other counties are coming before these representatives, if we, it gets unwieldy, but if we can coordinate the voices that we're hearing within our county, as well as with counties that have similar issues, as well as with the district meetings that come from the Association of Minnesota Counties that identify our priorities, if all of those things become collective, our voice becomes louder, so I think there's advantage as opposed to, we've often, you know, been in positions of decision-making where we have entities come before and everybody wants to one up the other one. I think if we have this coordinated effort, somehow be able to facilitate that, it would reinforce the importance because it affects a lot more people than just the individualism that comes with each county.
Okay, so department heads and everyone else be thinking about this and discussion when we have our community meeting. It is now, it's really close to 9:00 AM, would you think? So I'll turn this over to Brady then. We're going to talk about the Caribou Lake Watershed Subordinate District Special Assessment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a little background, many years ago, the board established the service district, and they let it lapse in 2021 when it was again renewed, and for a new fee over a five-year period. These districts are established under state law, of course, and so in 2021, we did not, the board did not let it expire, so the district still exists, but now it's asking for financing again because the last financing was to last for five years. And this time, the request came from the Caribou Lake Property Owners Association, and Tom Ryder, I believe, is here representing them. Tom, you might want to come forward if there's any questions. So they've made the actual request, this time for a fee of $250. So they've made the actual request, this time for a fee of $250 over the next five-year period, per each of the property owners in this Caribou Lake Subordinate Service District, includes both Caribou Lake and Bigsby Lake, but it's the Caribou Lake Association that requested it. And the reason it's coming here for a public hearing, it's not by state statute, because the district is created, but because the, the board wanted to make sure that everyone in that area, both Caribou and Bigsby, were notified of this. So you directed the auditor's office to send notices to each of the property owners, which we did, and then publish this notice of the public hearing in the paper. And I think we can let Tom speak to the purpose of it and why they're asking for such a large increase this time from what was asked for four years ago. So if you can give them some background on that.
Sure, glad to. Good morning. Yeah, the reason why we're here asking for an increase is because of the unfortunate arrival of an invasive species in the lake, first noticed about three years ago. And the increased cost would be to address that invasive species. The, the fee was set years ago at a level that was appropriate for the water quality work that we do, and that's about 12 bucks a year per taxpayer. So that covers water quality testing that we've been doing for decades to protect the lake. But that level of assessment is not enough to deal with the invasive species. We developed a plan, we've implemented that last summer, we used our own cash reserves to pay for that, so now we're kind of, use that up, so it's not a sustainable path forward. So we're hoping for this increase, excuse me, so that we can continue to implement this plan each summer. And the plan involves harvesting. We'll never be able to eradicate these, rusty crayfish is the invasive species. But by harvesting, we can keep the numbers down to a level where the negative impacts of them will be mitigated. And those negative impacts relate to fisheries. The fish population would be reduced. The native crayfish multiply exponentially, we're already seeing that. They eat up all the grasses. The grasses are, absorb nutrient pollution. They're also a place for fish to breed and lay their eggs, so fish population will come down, and potentially the water quality will be degraded. So those are the impacts, negative impacts of the rusty crayfish. What we're doing is harvesting, just to keep the numbers down, to minimize the impacts. So it, again, it's about $12 per taxpayer is what they're paying. Currently, we're looking for an additional $38 a year for these efforts to combat the invasive species.
When I attend the Caribou Lake Association meetings, I'm thinking about five years ago, when we would have a report about, well, we're watching it in other lakes. And now all of a sudden, in the last couple of years, they're in the lake that we all enjoy fishing and motorboating and all of that. So you could only have so many rusty crayfish barbecues, and then you have to have help. So that's, that's where they're at right now. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tom. So I'm assuming the Lake Association, when you recognize this and with your monitoring the quality of the water and things, that, that people on the lake are aware of the findings and what's going on, so there's discussion, there's a letter that went out, and the response to that, everybody wanted to protect, you know, the, the resource, the gift that, that you have on that lake. So what was the nature of the, the discussions leading up to this public hearing, and to what the proposal is that's before the board here?
We've had pretty extensive discussions. We've had several meetings. We have meetings twice a year of our association. Our, our association is voluntary, but I would say about a third of the landowners, you know, stakeholders are typically there at a meeting. And at several meetings in a row, we raised it, we, for discussion, there was good discussion. There were, we took a vote, and it was unanimous. Everybody at the meeting said, yeah, we want to do this. We're glad to pay 50 bucks a year. So I feel like we have very broad support from our membership, unanimous support. The board has been discussing it for a while. We've considered various approaches, and the only one that really makes any sense is, is the harvesting. We hired the Crawdaddies last summer, you may have heard them, they are commercial fishermen. They started on Pike Lake, which is where these things came from. They harvest them, they sell them to the trout, to the fisherman's daughter. So we hired them to come to Caribou to harvest, to sort of supplement our efforts, and they were terrific. But it seemed clear that even that effort was inadequate, because they continue to grow exponentially, both in numbers and in range, so they, they, they sort of are marching across the lake, sort of almost apocalyptic, as you see them spreading, and there's, you know, it's really hard to slow it down. So we need to up our game even further, which we hope to do next summer, and we have several strategies. We're, I met with Cathedral of the Pines yesterday, they seem very enthusiastic about helping to harvest. We'll hire the Crawdaddies potentially again, but all that takes funding, in particular hiring the Crawdaddies, because, I mean, you know, that's.
Thank you.
With the bulk of our expenses.
Madam Chair, see, we, we received from all those letters sent, four comments, and they were all positive.
Commissioner Mills? And I spoke with one of your property owners out in there, and very, very much in favor of this, explaining every effort you have made to get the information out, and understanding that this is part of the, excuse me, that this, and understanding that this is part of the process to have this hearing, but really concerned about, feeling a little overwhelmed with those invasive species, so. It sounds like it's a greatly support, it's a highly supported effort.
Yeah, it's good to hear. It's kind of, the problem speaks to the connectedness of all the lakes in our county. You know, this came from Pike, it went through Murmur Creek, to Bigsby, and then from Bigsby into Caribou. You know, all these lakes and streams are connected, and, and these things, once there's an introduction here, before you know it, it's going to be there. So it's, to some extent, you know, other lakes should pay attention and, and really be as vigilant as they can in, in dealing with this, so. And we're a resource available for anybody that's interested in hearing our experience, we're glad to share it.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We were at the University of Minnesota Extension, and this was a big topic that was discussed as a focus during that recent meeting this last week. So as we become aware of how things impact us in our, in our county, certainly we have partners that are trying to assist in, in helping and identifying the problems and trying to find the best way to address it. My initial question is to find out, when you have people that are in agreement and come alongside, it just tends to lend energy to be able to achieve what you hope to do, so that's a good thing.
Yep.
So I will make a motion to approve the $250 special assessment fee in 2025 for each of the property owners within the Caribou Lake Watershed Subordinate Service District for use over a five-year period from 2025 through 2029.
I support.
Any further comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, from my understanding, if the assessment was $12, and it was going to go to $38?
No, no.
Go to 50. So it was.
The 38, which would be 50, yeah. It's $38 more.
More, correct.
And, and this motion is 250?
Over, over five years, so it's $50 a year.
Over the five-year period, yeah.
Assessed.
Thank you.
It's up to Brady if he wants to do it $50 a year.
Yeah.
Or 250 once every five years.
Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification.
So, yeah, that should be part of the motion as to how to do that. You had, you were asking for the 250 at one time.
We really don't have a strong preference. My feeling, whatever is administratively easier for you, either is, is fine.
As the, the letter sent.
The letter that was sent out says 200, a one-time assessment of 250 to cover the needed work over the next five years.
I think that was sort of the model that was established in the past, where we did it once every five years. You know, I think it, it might be a little better to do it $50 a year in terms of public perception, because there, there will be people who'll get their taxes and will say, oh my gosh, 250 a year, that's a lot.
Yeah.
They don't realize it's only once every five years.
No, that's, it's not an administrative difficulty. These are, so, that's, I would recommend then doing $50 a year for five year, each of five years.
Okay, so I will amend it then, to approve the motion at $50 per year as a special assessment.
I'll support that.
Commissioner Sterling? And I'd just like to add, however, that $50 this year is going to go a lot farther than $50 in five years.
Yes.
So if maybe, just not to refute what, the, the motion, but to get the money up front, but then there's the homeowners, so if, if the association, I think if they would prefer to have it $50 a year, then we should go with that, knowing their, their, their neighbors, as it were.
I, I think it's probably politically a little more palatable and easier for people to understand, but once every five years, we've found in the past, has been a little awkward, and we would get those questions, so, oh, you know, is this every year? I just think it's a little easier, and we have, you know, some savings if we need to balance out our cash flow from one year to the next. So I think the 50 would, might be more sensible.
So that's how I amended it. Everybody agreeing on that? If somebody wants to pay the full 250, that's up to them, but they have a choice of $50 per year, right? Okay, all right, just so we have all that. Okay, so we have a motion, and did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. I'm still back with the $50. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I would, I would like to add that when I was speaking with the, the homeowner on that lake, I, in her telling, I envisioned, if you've ever seen the, during the Dust Bowl, the movies where they're trying to beat out the locusts coming in to save their crop, that was the impression I got from the homeowners on Caribou Lake trying to hold back the crayfish.
In the water.
In the water, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
And, and, you know, it's got to be very frustrating and difficult, and it's a, a perfect example to both figuratively and literally work upstream.
Yes.
To do preventative measures, so we really want to lean on our Aquatic Invasive Species team to, to work on that, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Appreciate the efforts that, that Caribou Lake is taking.
Thank you for coming, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we are going to have a presentation by Highway Engineer Robbie, who has a full gamut of projects going on.
Yes.
With bridges.
All the bridges.
All the bridges.
All of them. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So we are already on the fifth annual presentation of one of these. So this is kind of the overview, oh yeah, quick, of what we've been doing this last summer, what we're doing this coming summer, and then, I'm not going to go every project, go over every project on the 10-year plan, but that's kind of part of this approval process, or this presentation. And then also, you'll see in there, really, the crux of it is approving a five-year bridge priority list. And so that lists all the bridges, at least that I know of, that we would like to replace in the next five years. The reason I say that I know of is because sometimes you actually find a bridge that we didn't know about, so it happens. But this helps funding, this helps things like were discussed before about lobbying efforts, saying, because this resolution gets submitted and gets combined with all the other counties, so you can go to the legislature and say, hey, this is why we need a bonding bill, this is why we need bridge bonds, this is why we need infrastructure money. So that's kind of the big picture with this, but we'll focus on Cook County now for a little bit. So it's a picture of our interns from this last summer, I've talked about that a little bit here before, it's a ton of fun. I intend to do that program again. I think we're only going to do two, though, four was kind of a lot, but why not start big and figure it out from there, so. Things we'll go over, like I said, we'll go over 2024, how those projects went, 2025, kind of a look ahead, design services that we have out there. I'll go over alternative funding a little bit, and then just a quick summary. You can see we have one of our inspectors, Scott, literally holding up the bridge, so that's some of the conditions of our structures out there. So 2024, Alfred Creek, and so this is down on Alfred Creek Road there, kind of towards the west end, great project to get done. You can see the before and the bottom, you know, the bottom picture, and then what it looked like afterwards. So it's amazing what a little hydraulic analysis and site surveying can do to say, hey, this is really undersized. That's a, a problem I'm seeing a lot in our projects, and so this huge scale up is becoming less and less surprising to me, the more we do these projects. And so this, this project was funded through bridge bonds and through a little bit of levy and TST funds. Bridge bonds for us can typically cover 99% of a project. Most of the time, we, because we're so small, we can cover 99% of the project, that's written in statute. There's some costs from the levy or locally that we do have to cover, no matter what, and most of the time it's approach costs, so basically just grading the road so it fits into the project, it's typically $10,000 to $20,000. So it's pennies on the dollar when you're talking about, in this case, an $880,000 project. So what's great with that is, again, $880,000 from bridge bonds, we had a little bit of kick in there. You can see what the original bid was to the final cost. We had some additional costs as far as the detour that was proposed and that was used. Some of the rain, if you remember, that happened earlier in the summer and in the spring, washed out one of the crossings, so we had to put that back. And so that's where you see the additional cost from. But Northland did a great job. Keep this picture in mind, because the next agenda item, once we're through this, we'll talk about, is going to be very similar to this project. Our heated garage is another great project that got done. That was something we had been working on for about two years, I think, if I remember to talk about. We had worked that through our highway committee, and we had worked that through a committee of the whole, and we've talked about it at the board meeting a few times. Originally started as a cold storage facility, after we did kind of a needs assessment with the capital improvement plan. While that was getting done, we were also working on this, and so it really pivoted into, you know, a heated facility would treat us a lot better, and work for us long-term a lot better than just another cold storage building. So funding for that comes from our state aid allocations, we get money from the state every year, portions of that can get spent on buildings, actually. And so, and then our undesignated fund balance, which we've talked about a lot before. Rice Lake Constructors was our general contractor on it, we had a GMP of $2.5 million, and right now, we're just finalizing some punch list items. Obviously, it gets cold up here pretty quick, so they have to come back in the spring and, you know, go through the seeding and that type of stuff. So overall, great project to get done, or almost done. Our project up in Grand Portage this year, and so if you remember, that is a realignment of Cassau 17. The reason for that project was to really take vehicular traffic off of the historic stone bridge that's up there. And so that's where we are realigning the road, we're building a new bridge, and so that old historic bridge stays in place, but it becomes a pedestrian facility. And so really, it's just a trail through there now, a walking path, and, and vehicles are going to be on the new alignment. We had some pretty big design changes happen, kind of in the middle of construction with this, if you remember the conversations that were happening with the DNR, kind of threw a wrench in a lot of things. We eventually sorted it all out, but that caused the bridge to actually get longer, and procurement times to actually delay the project. And so right now, the approach spans are built, it's a three-span structure, so the, the first and the third span are built, the middle span is not there right now. So we're just waiting for that to get here. Hopefully, it should wrap up pretty early. Once the snow melts, we can get that done. There's a couple other little things we need to clean up up there as well, since it's still open, but you can see redstone construction, they've done a great job, KGM is their sub, that did a lot of the earthwork up there, they do a lot of work for us here. You can see the original bid was just under $2.6 million. So it's kind of a light 2024, all things considered. So it's kind of a light 2024, all things considered, I know that was three projects, but I don't like to be bored, so I like, you know, four, five, let's ramp it up a little bit. So 2025, what's going on? Tofti Park Road, we've talked about that a lot here, that was recently awarded to K G M for seven, about three-quarters of a million dollars, it's a great, great reason why we have the T S T Fund, the Transportation Sales Tax Fund that exists up here, that half-cent sales tax, it's for projects like this, and so that, my opinion on that is, is that, so we'll start that after the July Fourth Parade up there, that was a thing that the township was very, very keen on, we didn't want to interrupt that, and so we'll start this after that, and it's a mill and overlay and partial reconstruction, so it's been a great process, working with the township, working with the landowners on this to really dial in this project. Spruce Creek, which we'll actually talk about next, but another project up to, that we're gonna construct down on Cascade Beach Road, bridge replacement, very similar to the Alfred Creek one that we just went over, and so that was awarded to Northland Constructors, or hopefully will be awarded to Northland Constructors, for about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is gonna be funded through town bridge funds, and so if you guys remember all the U T signs, that allowed us to access these town bridge funds, so again, ten to twenty thousand dollars out of our local money, the rest of it is funded through this other account, and we'll start that in early June. Gunflint Multi-Use Trail, so if you remember the one we finished from Highway sixty-one next to G E S there, up to County Road Seven, this will be a continuation of that, so we'll continue up the Gunflint, around the L E C, behind my office, behind the school, all the way to Fifth Avenue, and then turn down Fifth Avenue and finish in front of the recycling center. The portion that'll be on Fifth Avenue is gonna be a six-foot wide sidewalk, just to match into what's already there, the rest of it'll be a ten-foot wide multi-use trail. And so, this one was interesting, we have a whole bunch of different acronyms for alternative funding, at state and federal level, so you have the T A Funds, which we were awarded, that's Transportation Alternatives, that was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, Active Transportation Funds, which is state-funded, I think was another hundred and something thousand dollars, and then C R P Funds, which is Carbon Reduction Program Funds, it was very minuscule, it was about nineteen thousand dollars, just because we tried to account for inflation and there was money available, so why not, why not take it? Like I said, ten-foot wide multi-use trail, six-foot wide sidewalk down Fifth Avenue West, right now it's getting reviewed, hoping to have it out for bid in March, it's a little later than I would prefer, but it's a small project, it's wholly funded through everything else, so I'm not super worried about it. I'm assuming one of the projects I'll talk about in a minute, that contractor's probably gonna bid on this one, if I had to bet. This one, Mill the Hill and Little Devil Track River, so this is a massive project, actually we're doing some research, and it's the largest one we can think of in recent history that we are going to deliver. So this is about, all things considered, there's three projects rolled into this one, you have the resurfacing of the Gunflint Trail, a little lane widening, couple of intersection improvements, and the bridge replacement, you have the resurfacing of Cut Off Road there, that's a separate project, and then there's actually, we're partnering with Soil and Water here to do, they're working on some Little Devil Track River stream restoration, so all of that's kind of happening at the same time. Overall, we're talking about, about eleven and a half million dollars for everything, that was awarded to K G M pretty recently, but you can see we have a ton of different funding sources on this project to make it happen, about nine million dollars overall in grants that we have secured in order to do this project, we can't do this project without all of those funding sources, so, very excited for this one, this'll be big. I was bugging Rowan and Gene actually pretty recently about the status of the contract, because our contractor was asking, when can they start, and I said yesterday, because this is gonna be massive and they need to get in there, the sooner the better, so, that'll be a good one. Design Services, so we work with consultants on top of doing our own designs in-house, obviously we gotta keep everybody busy and fed on our staff, but there's plenty of work to do, and so a lot of it we do consult out, especially if the project is, is too complicated for us. There's certain projects, like if it's an actual bridge, you know, instead of just a culvert, we can't do that in-house, so we have to call somebody to do that. But in-house stuff, so we'll start with Woods Creek, there's a series of culverts there along Woods Creek that we are working on replacing, and actually there's a creative way to look at it to help restore Woods Creek back to its natural habitat, meaning I think those pipes are undersized, and so we're finalizing the hydraulics right now to kind of verify that. Part of that is also, there'll be, we're talking about paving, part of Linscoog Road, just the first quarter mile or so from Highway sixty-one, that kind of gets you up some really steep stuff and around a curve, that is, that is pretty problematic, and so I'm hoping for that, we're looking at 2027 construction, funding could be a slew of different things, the pipes could be bridge bonds, Outdoor Heritage Fund likes funding stream restoration, but then also levy and T S T dollars can go towards that paving component on the road. Casper's Hill Road, there's a culvert up there, I know this is, this is kind of a random one, and this really came from a coordination with our maintenance staff, so every year, every other year, that road washes out, basically blows out during the spring melt, and we have to rebuild it. When you look at it, it's just a culvert that sits, you know, eight feet below the road, kind of in the middle of, the stream barely trickles, but for some reason, however it works up there, it completely washes out every year, so that's when we identified that we're gonna upsize, and so that'll be wholly levy funded, that is tax dollars spent on that, and so we're aiming for 2027 construction on that one. Couple other in-house things, we've talked about the Gunflint Trail a lot, obviously there's a ton of pavement in this county, a lot of the bad stuff resides on the Gunflint Trail, so one of them is the redoing the ninety-two's, and so it's about a four, five-mile stretch of road there, you know, just past mid-trail, what was really great is we were awarded one and a half million dollars through the Local Road Improvement Program, that's state funds, to go towards that project, that's not gonna cover anywhere near the total cost, but it's still a huge chunk of funds to go towards it, and so we're aiming for 2026 construction, again, that's something we're working on in-house right now. And then kind of a last big one, and it ties into some other things I've discussed, is our crossing inventory survey, we have over a thousand crossings in the county that we are responsible for, and so those are all the culverts that are under the roads, this doesn't include driveway culverts, we're also responsible for those, but these are the ones that are under the road, and so what's interesting is just a preliminary analysis of those, we have over ninety that we've identified for upsizing, thirty of those could become bridges. To give you, yeah, to give you an idea of what that is, we currently have a bridge inventory of sixty, so if we added thirty, it's quite the increase, so we're just trying to take it one thing at a time to see which one of these are problematic, which are high priority, and really just kind of work on doing it, what's great is where we can update this too, as our staff updates, you know, replaces culverts, we update the inventory, so it really helps us kind of formalize our work a little bit. Devil Track Road, so the chunk of it that's from the ball club to the end of the pavement there, another bad stretch of road, bad stretch of pavement, L H B is working on that design for us right now, it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollar contract, that one I moved to 2026, I've been kind of bumping that one around as projects ebb and flow, you know, priorities change, we're trying to deliver what we can, you know, if funding is restricted or something. We had one public meeting back in May of 2023 already on that, so we got some good public input already, and this one would just be wholly state aid funded, so again, that money we get from the state every year would go towards this project. A bridge, you can see way at the end of the Arrowhead Trail there, almost literally at the limits of what is ours and what we are responsible for, there's a bridge there, and so we're gonna plan on replacing that in 2027, Erickson Engineering is working on that for us right now, and you can see with that one, since it's on a U T, it can be town bridge funds, and we'll have to kick in probably a little bit, but ninety-nine percent of it's gonna be town bridge funds. Lots of projects, so the Otis Creek Bridge, and then the Arrowhead Trail Resurfacing Project, that's one that's been talked about quite a bit as well, L H B, we're working with them on this, again, I like working with L H B, they do good work for us, they treat us as a priority, which I always appreciate, you know, we're small up here in Cook County, and sometimes that gets kind of pushed to the side, but they don't treat us that way, so, thanks, L H B. But there's kind of two parts to this project, one of them is resurfacing the existing pavement and upsizing a culvert at Otis Creek, and then another part that we've been exploring is actually extending that pavement all the way up to Irish Creek Road, and so we had a really big public meeting, it was great, I think Commissioner White and I were there, and turns out, and I think if you bring food, people show up, but we had probably fifty-plus people there to hear this discussion, which was wonderful, we're gonna hold another one, I wanna say in March, I think we have, I'm still working on a date and exhibits and figuring out a timeline that works for them to come up again, but wonderful discussion, part of this project, and it might be on the next slide, is also resurfacing Chicago Bay Road, and so that's just to the south of this, but yeah, a lot of work that's going on up there, so I'm pretty excited, we had to push this one to 2026 though, it was supposed to be done in 2025, but just the nature, nature of the business. Flute Reed River, and so we've done a few bridge replacements on the Flute Reed already, but it bobs and weaves all over our county roads, and so this one is kind, is on the lower portion of the Camp Twenty Road, right now we're working with M S A, another great consultant I enjoy working with, the existing bridge is an undersized culvert, and so that's an area that floods a lot, if you look at the hydraulics and the survey info that was connected, it's actually creating a secondary river over there, so you have normally the main river, it's creating a second one because it floods so much, so that's not good. So what we're actually gonna do is be replacing that with a beam-type structure, again, a bigger upsizing of what's there, so it'll be a pretty big difference. 2026 construction with that one, and then, fun fact, this is the eighth poorest-rated bridge on the entire local bridge system, that means across the whole state, thousands of bridges, this is number eight, so, not something I'm proud of, but, fun fact. This was another project that is kind of unique and was kind of headed by our maintenance department a little bit, is this Fall River Restoration Project, reason our maintenance department brings it up is the southern crossing there, if you're familiar with County Road Six, is a big dip in the road, and it's one of those that, basically it acts like a dam, you can see how wide Fall River is, and you can see how wide our culvert is, it's not good, and so just looking at it and going down there, it's a very eerie feeling, you feel like it's gonna fall over at any point, and so this is another one we're working on, M S A, as I've mentioned before, is working on the hydraulics, we're finalizing the bridge design, we pushed this one to 2027, there's three crossings here that need to be designed, and that's, takes a little bit of work to do, and so what's neat though is we were awarded one point four million dollars from the Outdoor Heritage Fund to work on this, and so I've mentioned that funding source before, again, stream restoration, where in order to get the stream back to its natural state, we have to put in a bridge, and so that's been a good conversation with the folks down there to talk in, in those terms, and especially when you can come with, with bridge bonding to match that as well, so, it's been a really good discussion with that group. Enough about projects, alternative funding, so it's something I try and hit on a lot, we could not do the volume of projects we do without all of this extra money, historically we've done one project a year, or even zero projects a year, if you look back to like two thousand and nine, again, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I don't like to be bored, my staff doesn't like to be bored, and so if we can do three, four, five, six projects a year, let's do it, there's plenty of work to do. So you can see, I've mentioned the U T stuff and the town road and town bridge accounts, just switching those few roads over to U Ts and putting up the signs, that brings in fifty thousand dollars annually to us, to help towards road maintenance, similarly for the town bridge account, we get about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually for that, that'll pause once I replace all the bridges, so that's a good thing, but you can also access other town bridge accounts if you need a little bit more funds for a project like that. But you can see, since 2021, we've been able to garner about eighteen million dollars in outside funding, and so I think we're averaging about five million dollars a year, so, which is awesome. In short, lots of projects, lots of money, a lot of high-dollar stuff, you can see 2024, we had about six million dollars worth of construction, 2025, we're aiming for about fourteen, and then the design service projects that we have out there, another fifteen million dollars in construction. And I went through that real fast, but, does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Robbie.
Sure.
Haven't had the privilege of meeting you personally, did, I contacted, tried to connect here, but, very impressive, and I, I think it's hugely important just to underscore that your resourcefulness has contributed largely to our ability to attempt these projects, and that, that's a, that's a huge value. It can be overwhelming because we have an awful lot of infrastructure and we have challenges with some of that infrastructure, and we don't have a lot of density and money coming from, like, counties that have a greater percentage of revenue that come out of levy from property tax as opposed to our build funds that we're, you know, constantly negotiating to try to keep them, so that it helps us out, so your resourcefulness is, is, is huge. The other thing is just the partnership relationships that you develop with the contractors and the consultants that you bring. I, with regard, I think it'd be helpful, with the Gunflint Project, the ninety-two's project that is slated for 2026, you said that one point five million of that was coming from these L R I P funds, and do you know what the projected cost on that project is overall?
I think right now we're hovering around the four-ish million-dollar mark, which is kind of tracking with what we're seeing as far as cost per mile with, you know, reconstruction or rehabbing roads, it is more expensive to do business up here, to do construction, so I'm not, I'm not surprised if, if that project is in that four to five million range, and so there's, there's other funding sources out there, road money is actually kind of hard to find, bridge money's a little bit easier, but yeah, so the one and a half is probably covering quarter of it or so, if it comes in lower, great, if anyone wants to throw in a two or three million dollar bid, have at it.
And, and the reason I bring it up in your presentation, which appreciated, is, is just to understand between now and projected, you know, start and completion date on this, you've got this much money, where are you gonna find the other money?
Right.
And it speaks to the issue of resourcefulness, and, and when you set out and envision that there's something you want to tackle so you won't be bored, but then you also have to figure out how I'm gonna get the rest of that money, and so that's why the discussion is just, you know, to help the board as well as the public understand and reinforce the fact that you're resourceful, so, appreciate that.
Thank you, and, and too, any, any shortfall, you know, my goal with all the grants and kind of all that alternative funding, is to just, I guess, very bluntly say, have someone else pay for it, have a different account of money pay for our stuff, the Gunflint's a state aid road, and so that state aid money we get every year can go towards that project.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's money that we can just accumulate then and save up if there's funding sources that are covering it, and so I'm confident, you know, at this point, that we'll be able to do that project no matter what, and, you know, worst-case scenario too, and this gets in the weeds a bit, is we can borrow ahead on our state aid account, which isn't an uncommon thing to do, I prefer not to, but we can, and so, yeah, there's, there's lots of avenues, you know, with the grants and alternative funding, but also we do get money from the state that's very reliable, isn't a part of any federal freezing on anything, and so, you know, I'm confident in, in, in getting that project delivered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner White. Town Road and Town, Town Road and Town Bridge Funding, is that state?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Robbie, great presentation as usual, I asked staff earlier about the Mill the Hill and the four-lane section, and I thought there was gonna be a healthy paved shoulder there as well, is that changed?
Yes.
Or, oh, there is.
There, there, yeah, so there will be, I probably don't have time to pull it up right now, but I, I watched that meeting, and so appreciate the questions, I was trying to type to everybody, but I don't think anyone had their computers open, but yeah, so there will be, I wouldn't say healthy, but, you know, there'll be a four or five-foot shoulder on either side of the road there in the four-lane section, so that four-lane, yeah, so for what it's worth, the four-lane section will go from about the water tower up to pincushion, so it's about a mile-long section, and then there'll be four lanes, they'll be eleven feet wide, and so, which is a little, it's a minimum as opposed to twelve feet, that's how we're able to fit it in, on top of the shoulders, and then we'll have a guardrail as well on that lakeside, so, you know, you won't feel like you're getting flung off the road, hopefully not.
Any other comments or questions? So was someone, someone wanna make a motion to approve the five-year bridge? Do you wanna, do you wanna approve all of this?
I would prefer that, yes.
So, so move that.
We're all kind of silent.
Yeah, I know.
Now, support.
Now, support.
I have a motion and.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abolled, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robbie, but before you leave, we had a little discussion here. We're going to the legislative session the end of February.
Yes.
If you have any requests or comments you'd like to send with us, send them to Minister DeRouwen.
Can do. Bridge bonds, I'll just scream "bridge bonds" from the top of my lungs. Bonds, bonds, bonds. Just remember that. But yes, I'll send them to Ron.
Okay. All righty, good. Thank you on that.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation, too.
Absolutely.
Are you okay with this, this picture behind us?
I'm, I love, I think it's a great location, every meeting, everyone can see it, it's perfect.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, so the next thing, I kind of touched on this project already, but it's, it's awarding the Spruce Creek Bridge Replacement. I know when you can scroll down to the engineer's estimate compared to the low bid, and you can kind of go, whoa, what's going on? You know, we, we've talked about engineers' estimates in the past here and, and what it is, you know. It's a guess. We're doing our best to try and see how much we think this will cost. In this case, I need to have a conversation with our consultant, because this is obviously way off, but, that being said, this project is almost identical to that Alfred Creek project. And so, once we were working on Alfred Creek, and, and the other thing, too, is kind of the series of events that takes place when we approve projects and when, you know, an engineer's estimate gets submitted, you know, that, this was years ago to the state, and so that was already kind of cemented before we knew how much Alfred Creek was going to cost. And so when, once we had, once I saw how much Alfred Creek was, I'm not surprised at these bids. I think this, the, the low bid that we got here from Northland is correct. I don't think it's something that is, we're not getting, you know, hosed over by 70% on anything. They're very identical projects, and so this, this price to me, in my opinion, is very, very reasonable, is what the project will cost. So I don't know if, I know, again, big discrepancy, I understand that, but does anybody have any questions on it?
Commissioner White. Do we use the same engineers? Do our engineers need to have a?
So those two, those two are different engineering firms. And I'd have to look back, actually, at Alfred Creek to see that bit abstract and how close that was. But it's, it's something where, you know, and we've talked about it here a bit, where being in Cook County, it does, it costs more, stuff costs more up here, and so, a lot of times, you know, firms will forget to put on that adjustment factor for up here. So I'm not, again, I'm not surprised, for what it's worth, I would not read too much into the estimate. Like I said, this is a very comparable project to Alfred Creek, and so the fact that those numbers are really close makes me very comfortable with this. And again, this is town bridge funds, this is not levy money, be a small portion that comes out of the levy, like I've talked about before.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award the Alfred, or I'm sorry, the Spruce Creek Bridge Replacement to Northland Constructors.
Support.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abolled, same sign. Passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have some deep discussions coming up, and so let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and start with that.
We're back from our break and Pat has joined us from DDA. And the next topic will be discussion about the finalists in the interview process and all the thing, all the homework that we had the last 10 days. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff. How are you this morning?
Doing great.
Doing well.
Wonderful. Well, as you mentioned, there was a bit of homework that was assigned to each of you, so I do appreciate it. I know that you put in a lot of time and effort going through that. What I'm hoping to do this morning is first off, review the semifinalists. We had eight individuals. And if we could go ahead and narrow that down to four or five that you would like to invite in for interviews. And then the second thing, I'd like to chat with you a little bit about the interview format. So go through that process and try and get some of those details. First thing I want to make sure is that all of the Commissioners have March 5th, which is a Wednesday, reserved on your calendar. That's the day that we were planning to do interviews. And if there are any conflicts, we should probably address that at this time. But that would be a Wednesday, March 5th.
I think we've all had that date for a while.
Yeah, we've, we've put that on our calendar when you first mentioned it, so we've cleared it. Yes, we're good.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, then with that, you know, the next item of business is to just talk about the semifinalists. Just to give a little background summary for residents who may be watching, we had a total of 41 applicants for the county administrator position. I went through and reviewed those applicants and I moved forward to the board 12 of those candidates. Since that time, we've had several of those drop out of running for the position, simply because for some people, they had other applications out there. They took a different job. Others, it was just bad timing for a transition. So through that process, we lost about four candidates. But we do have eight candidates that I believe are well-qualified for the position. So what we'll be doing this morning is we'll be referring to those candidates by numbers, not by names, because at this time, the identity of those individuals is confidential. So we've got eight candidates, and again, we'll be referring to them by numbers. And you Commissioners have had a video interview, you have a work personality assessment, and an information disclosure statement on each of those eight candidates. Hopefully, that information has allowed you to better evaluate each candidate's fit for the Cook County Administrator position. And so at this time, I would just ask that we go around the table and that you tell me who your top choices are for county administrator based on review of those eight applicants. What I will be doing is I will be assigning five points for your top choice, four points for your second choice, et cetera, and I will come up with a ranking system based on your input. So are there any questions before we go through and you start telling me what your choices are for county administrator based on the eight that you had to review?
Any questions from anyone? No, we're good.
Okay. Anybody who would like to jump up and volunteer, if you would just please, you know, let me know your first, second, third, fourth, fifth choice. If you don't find that there are five people who you would be comfortable hiring as Minister, you know, that number may be three, that number may be four, if you would just give me whatever your rankings are for the top candidates, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner Sullivan said she'd like to start.
Good morning, Pat.
Wonderful.
And I appreciate all the information and the emails you've sent us responding to our questions. So I've had a chance to evaluate our candidates on their experience, education, the video, looking at their WPI, and have also done some research on the Internet and visiting with people who may have some contact with candidates. And so I'll give you my list of top five candidates. At the top of the list would be candidate number two, then candidate three, candidate six, candidate five, and candidate number four.
Okay, thank you. So that's candidate two, candidate three, candidate six, candidate five, and candidate four.
Correct.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I'll go next, Commissioner White. Deb. My choices are, number one would be number four. And then I kind of rated candidates number one, two, and three all as equal in their final numbers. And then if I have, if I have to have a number five, it would be, it would be number five.
Okay. All right, so what I'm going to do, Commissioner White, is then give candidates one, two, and three, three points each, since they all tied for your second place, or?
Indeed.
Because typically, we try and, the point system, we try and prioritize. So giving candidates one, two, and three, three points, and then giving your last-place candidate, number five, one point.
All right.
So, thank you.
Well, I can be next. My top five candidates are this. Number one is six, two, eight.
Oh, say that again, number one is?
Six.
Is your sixth choice?
No, no.
Candidate number six.
That's my first choice, is number six.
Oh, I'm sorry, number six is your first choice, okay.
And then second is two, candidate two. Third choice is candidate eight. Fourth choice is candidate seven. And last candidate is two.
Oh, could you? I'm sorry, could you go through that one more time? I seem to, I had candidate two as your second choice.
Six, the first one is six, then two, then eight, seven, and two.
You listed two twice.
You had two twos.
Oh, sorry. Six and three, sorry. Eight, seven, two.
Six, three, eight, seven, and two. Okay, that clears it up. All right. Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Gamble or Mills?
Yeah, I, I struggled quite a bit. I really appreciate the numerical guide. It really helps begin. It can be overwhelming to try to evaluate the various candidates with their various experiences and such. And then I had a number of close calls and ties, and so the numbers only get you so far and you have to go through and find some other ways to evaluate. And I'm really grateful for our technology. I was able to go back and watch videos of board meetings that the various candidates had been a part of, and to see how they operate, how they perform, a little bit about their personality and leadership style through that as well. So there's a lot of information out there. And I, I keep changing my order. So the first two I have not changed. That's, those are the first, the first two I feel the most confident of, and that would be seven and two. And then beyond that, it gets a little trickier for me. And I guess where I'd go is probably one, three, and eight.
One, three, and eight. Okay. Thank you.
So evaluating this, and having been part of the process previously, looking at the things that we identified that we felt were important, and I think in evaluating that there, there, there should be an evaluation that includes, is more comprehensive. And I would look at these things, which have to be mined out, which are core competencies, core values, behavioral competencies, their education, relative experience in the field, their character and integrity, and their temperament. Knowing these things, you can be more disciplined in your process in determining. I will, I will say that having been a significant, played a significant role in defining the county administrator position, and the values, and the things that we were looking for, when we lost our first county administrator, went through it again, we had to revisit all of these things and put together a structure. We had additional things that allowed us to look at some of these other things that we could measure. And in, while there are some things that we could look at, they didn't cover all of the things that I think are integral into making sure that you bring a person in to the culture as it is, and somebody that you identify can help to change culture. We've had 10 years of experience, and that can be measured on multiple levels. We did have a town hall meeting that was intended to let citizens give input on any number of subjects, and my intent in that meeting was to take those concerns or issues that citizens would bring up. We had a little over 50 in attendance. And, and then I would just write them down. It was intended to be a listening session. We did respond to questions, give them an opportunity to ask a question if they wanted to. And then I would take all of those issues that came up and list them, and then print them, and then give them to all the attendees, and they could rank in order of their priority what it is that was most important. We did not get beyond the issue of the county administrator. And so it underscores the importance of being sure that, that we are discerning, we are wise, and we are responsive to things that have been identified by the public, by employees, by interrelational, through intergovernment, and personal experience. Having gone through that and spent considerable time, as I'm sure fellow Commissioners have done, I only have one candidate that I, under that criteria, would even consider. And that's no disregard or disrespect, it is a discipline and evaluation that leads me to that conclusion. And yet, even with the one candidate, there are questions that should be asked to clarify anything that comes up when you listen to interview, and when you read resume, and you read a cover letter, and you look at the work personality index that was provided. And so that, that one candidate is six.
Okay.
And as we've had discussion before, if the pool of candidates that come before, that we receive resumes and gone through a process, if we get, get to a point where we say, you know, really, if we've done a good job of identifying what our values are in response to the experience over 10 years, and we find that, that the match isn't there and we aren't in alignment with our values and our expectations and the competencies, then, and then we just, we would have to start again. And the question is always posed, if you don't find somebody that you really fits all of those things and you've done your homework in that regard, are you willing to step back and say, there isn't an individual, because we've had 10 years in which you have an experience that has been problematic? And that can be identified substantively, not just in emotional response. The other thing, when you look back historically, you'll find that none of the three individuals that served in the capacity of county administrator, and we as a county moving into a form of governance, we had no experience with, none of them had any experience as a county administrator. And I felt that we really would be better served had we had somebody that was respected and had several years of experience, so they could mentor and help us transition into this county governance, because they were respected, they knew what they were doing, they, they would be responsible, not malleable, meaning that we would shape their opinions that would be in conflict with their lived experience. And so having said that, when I look at this and evaluate this, if I have individuals that are a replica of what we've experienced in the past, I think we're setting ourselves up again. And so that's my response. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. And yeah, certainly, as we go through this process, if, you know, if the board comes to the conclusion that none of these candidates are viable, certainly, your satisfaction is, is most important, and we are not afraid to go out for another recruitment. So where we are, based on, on your input, I'll just go through and I'll, I'll list the applicant number and the number of points that were, that were assigned based on your preferences. Applicant number one had a total of six. Applicant number two had a total of 13. Applicant number three had a total of 13. Applicant four had six. Applicant five had three. Applicant six had 13. And applicant seven had seven. And applicant eight had four. Is there any question about the point system and how those numbers were arrived at? If not, I think you clearly had three applicants that had 13 points, and then you had an applicant with seven, and two applicants with six. Certainly, you'd want to, I believe, have discussion about possibly interviewing the three candidates with 13. And then I would encourage you to consider having four to five applicants, because you don't know if these applicants, you know, will do more research looking into Cook County, or will have other things happen in their lives that may cause them to withdraw prior to our interview date of March 5th. So I will open it up for the board to have discussion at this time, again, using numbers, and you can certainly talk about individual candidates if you would like.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat, for, for running the numbers there. I agree that we should, we should, well, and these, these in-person, or these next interviews rather, are, do not guarantee an offer being presented. I think it's worthwhile to, to interview those top three and I guess four would be pretty easy, obvious. And then it's, in my mind, it's a matter of deciding between the two six-pointers and maybe having more discussion there. Would you say interviewing six is silly? Not number six, six candidates?
What I would say is that it's time-consuming, and you certainly want to respect your time, but also the candidate's time. And if you're bringing somebody in who, you know, the board wants, you know, could not see them actually getting the position based on what they've seen to this point, six would seem to be excessive, I guess, in my mind. But it certainly is doable.
Yep.
But remember, you know, one of the things that we'll be talking about as we get further into this process is, you know, is the board receptive to reimbursing for, for travel, you know, whether that be flight, you know, lodging, renting a car, different things like that. So certainly, we can do six. It's going to take more time, especially as you consider maybe also having staff do an interview. You know, we haven't talked yet about, will there be a public reception, so will the public can provide some input? Will that be after the decision was made? Will that be with the finalists who are being interviewed? So just things to consider. But certainly, whatever the board would like to do, we will make happen.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I understand all that. I was, maybe a rhetorical question, just drawing the line between five and six, but I'm happy to have more discussion deciding between the fifth and sixth.
I guess in my looking at it, the candidates, the three 13s, and I would add a seven. That would be it. Commissioner White?
And I would agree on that, because the ones that are six, it's like, no, no. And I would agree on that because the ones that are six, it's like, no, no, I don't think they would be what we need in our organization.
I would also add that of candidates that are in that top four group, I'm aware that one of them is a finalist for another position and so potentially could withdraw if they received a position. So that makes me want to consider the two individuals that have scored a six.
Commissioners, one of the things, when I reach out to candidates following this meeting and I inform them that they've, you know, been selected for an interview, I will inquire with them, you know, are you committed to coming to this interview? Sometimes individuals, once they get selected for the interview, you know, within a few days, they may take a look at the airfare, the timing, and things may change. Typically, I'm able to figure that out within a couple of days. So we could certainly, you know, if you say we'd like to have four candidates and I reach out and I find out that one or two of them drop, if I have your permission, I can go ahead and include, reach out to other candidates who maybe weren't initially invited and invite them knowing that our numbers have already started to decline.
Unless we say the sixes but don't go below that, because that would, that would keep the numbers still pretty high.
Sure, yes. Yeah, that would put us, that would put us at six, six candidates if you were to go with six or above on scoring. That would put you at six candidates.
Right.
I, I think it's the board's responsibility to vet the candidates at this point so that it isn't pushing out beyond a number that seems reasonable, as Pat has indicated. I mean, we're all aware, but if you look at how that impacts the resources, both financially and time, and just capacity, mental and emotional, whatever capacity in the interviewing process to do our due diligence and understand what we're hearing and evaluate that with energy. I don't believe the number of candidates lends credibility to the process. I believe the process has to find the integrity and what we look at as to who the candidates are we should be interviewing. And if you look at what we do have as a resource right now in evaluating those candidates, I just think it is unwise to build numbers as the appearance of integrity in a process when there are straight out things that are huge red flags. And so why, if they are huge red flags, would we want to interview somebody? I think we're setting ourselves up for failure and it is a big part of what we heard in the public hearing, or the public town hall meeting, that we're just going to do what we did before. And that's why we have to learn from our lived experience, from the input that we get, from the people that are stakeholders in this, and do the discipline of looking at what these things mean. We, I have been in a number of meetings, as commissioners have of late, in boards and they're talking about best practices, they're talking about the meaning of words, they're talking about processes, they're talking about discipline. And every time I hear these things, I say, I would like to see that applied to this process so that we know when we look at somebody, if somebody has very little concern for others, and that's what they say is a self-assessment. And we have a 30-year, highly respected county administrator who in one word says the most important thing is relational. Do you think that an individual that scores low on concern for others is going to meet that requirement? That somebody who's spent 30 years in the position knows the importance of that to create a healthy culture? And if we have accountability, attention to detail? There's things in there that are hugely important. And if we did the core competencies and the core values and all these other things, look at the education component. Look at the education. How do we shape, how do we equip people to have the tools to do the job we're asking them to do in a county? And so there's just a lot of things that are there. So I appreciate your listening and I say this respectfully, but I don't think the number of candidates from the pool that we've been given is going to help us. I think it sets us up to be vulnerable to make decisions that are outside of the things we should have screened already at this point.
What I have heard Pat say, that he will call the candidates to see if anybody withdraws. And then we are looking at three 13s and a seven. If any of those withdraw, then he could go to a six or leave it at that. That's what I'm hearing. We have to help him understand, and we need to understand, that he will have the opportunity to find out if it's still a good goal list, the numbers that we gave him, the top four, or would he need to add somebody else if somebody drops? So...
And I am certainly comfortable with the four that this board has identified as the top four.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that one of those candidates did have another position that they were seeking.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or things that we can help Pat with?
If I could get a motion, that would be wonderful. And certainly, in that motion, you can say that your goal is top four and should the candidates upon initial contact, any of the applicants withdraw, that include the, we've got two individuals who, applicant one and applicant four, which both scored a six. If there's a direction on which of those candidates would be preferred to be considered as a replacement, should one drop. Obviously, if two drop, I would, you know, reach out to both of the six candidates. But who would be the board's first choice? One or number four?
Any opinion on that, Commissioner Gamble?
Would I, would I, thank you, Madam Chair. Pat, what I did is I took the candidates that we had, the eight, I went through all the information that we had and mined out what I felt, you know, through the video interviews, through the work personality index, through looking at the number of things that I had that I used to evaluate each one. And then I assigned numerical value to all of those things. So I do have all these candidates rated from, you know, one to eight. And based upon that rating that I have, my recommendation would be candidate one. But I'm saying that reluctantly, but I'm just giving that perspective from my standpoint.
Thank you.
Between the two sixes we're being asked, any opinion on that?
My opinion is candidate one.
To keep or to drop?
To keep. If he's asking, who would you take of those two, I'm saying candidate one.
Okay.
One, yes.
Commissioner Ron?
Just for context, I don't know if the other commissioners have the numbers in front of them. I've been calculating along with Pat and have the numbers reflected. As it relates to the difference between the two sixes here, as I'm looking at it, it stands out to me that applicant four is one of the board members' top choices. And of the makeup that we've, that the board has selected here, it looks to me that, Pat, you can verify this for me, that every other commissioner's top choice would be included in this. And so it's just something that, looking at the numbers, stood out to me.
Correct, exactly, Ron, yes.
So just between one and four, candidate four was one of the board members' top choices. Just because I have the numbers in front of me, I thought I would share that.
Commissioner Mills?
I really appreciate that. I do agree with Commissioner Gamble, however, with, if I needed to pick between one and four, I would, I would pick one. But I also agree that we, that in our, in our best case for what we have, we would have four candidates interviewed. So, Commissioner, candidate one would be a backup in my mind.
Okay, so we would put that, a backup or on hold, depending upon any phone conversations he would have?
Yeah, that's just my opinion and...
Okay, well, that's what we need.
Yep.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I think it would be healthy and it would be in keeping with best practices if this process that we went through, the homework, were something that we had a discussion as a board to understand why we made the decision we made. Because it seems a little bit inanimate, in a way, to just arrive at something without the value of one another's perspectives that refined our impressions. So it's not going through a process, to say we went through a process, it's understanding what we learned through the process that informs our decision. So I think this is really set up to be problematic because how do we know what we value? And how do we attach our responses to what we've heard from our staff and from our public and from our lived experience? And we're denying the credibility of all of that by simply going through a structure that couldn't lead us in a direction we really don't want to go.
Well, one thing I believe really helped me is I went through all of the different descriptions of their personality and everything, and then I matched them across the board. That's how I came to my conclusion, with the video, with their resume, with their education. So that's, I think we're going to get deeper into everything when they actually come and appear before us. Commissioner Mills?
That's essentially what I was going to say is, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Gamble, and I agree, it's almost like we're working in silos for this part of it. But once we get the names out there and it becomes public, then we can have a lot more frank discussions, I feel like, and open. But to your point, the fact that we're on the path without that, I understand your concern about it lacking, you know, genuineness or openness and then, and I don't, I don't like that either. My, our past hires, I had similar feelings and then working through it with the in-person interviews, I felt like we were able to really talk about things a lot more. And Commissioner Starley, what you said about going through, and Commissioner Gamble too, I believe, going through the personality index and pairing that with the video interviews and then, in my case, looking at meetings and their interactions with boards is how I, is how I came, and how that fits within our community and our, in our organization, that's how I came to my list. And I'm assuming that's how everyone came to their list. It's funny how they're all very different, but there's crossovers and similarities and I think that's where we're leaning now, is where are those, where are those intersections? And then trying to further evaluate those. It's not perfect by any means, but best foot forward and really trying to see if something can work without, clearly without committing to any, any decision on who, if anyone.
So Pat, do you need any further clarification?
No, it sounds to me like, it sounds to me like applicant number one is the backup should any of the four higher point-scoring applicants drop out. So I just...
There was just two commissioners who voiced an opinion there, so I think it's important that...
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so if the rest can, yeah, if you'd be willing to, you know, iron that out for me, see if there's total agreement there or if there needs to be more discussion on who that should be.
This is, Commissioner White, I was the commissioner who really wanted to have a number four and because when some of these other, another one of the higher-scoring applicants said, someone who's not, not even in the state, who says, oh yeah, Cook County would be a great place to live. How often have we heard that? Where people want to move to Cook County because they hear it's a great place to live, regardless of what their job is that they take, they get here and it's not as great as they thought. So to, I don't think they were pandering, but I do believe that just to say we're a great place to live, I would like these people to actually be here to walk around and, on a ten below day or something and tell me it's a good place to live. I mean, I'm not opposed to ten below, but, but people, there is such a built-up fiction sometimes about what Cook County is like, life in Cook County is, and I don't know how that, it can't be dispelled, but it has to be taken into consideration that people that don't live here don't know what they don't know about living here. And that could be something that they actually, once they arrive, realize that this is not the place for them. Not that it's a bad place, but it doesn't fit them. So to seriously look at people who, I mean, that statement is a warning to me because we've heard it before. And I very much would like to think that if anyone actually, whomever gets this position will actually live in the county to be part of our community entirely, not just a long-term guess. So I, for one, really think that candidate, was that candidate?
Candidate four.
Candidate four should be considered. There are, I have a lot of questions for that candidate, but there were, that also send up alarms. But by and large, I would like to be able to have a conversation with candidate number four.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is why the discussion is important because what drives each of us is what we choose to look at. And if you look at processes, processes defined for us, I feel uncomfortable always turning my back to you, Commissioner.
It's okay, Gary.
And then you should stay on mic as well. But processes create a discipline because, you know, we've, there's been discussions and some discussions say, I like to hire internally. That's a value you've identified. Another is, I like to hire locally because we always have people say that they, Cook County, but do they really know when they get here? So that becomes our priority. And so one can go on, I can say, I think it's important that we have somebody that's nurturing and really relational and builds a trust culture. That's my number one. So when we list all of the possible things we can throw out there, that they like pickleball, and I like pickleball... that they like pickleball, and I like pickleball, that we, we put those in there and then you prioritize, what is the most important things inherent into the position? So that either emotionally or preferentially, that isn't disciplined by identifying value and assigning the values. Because for me, if I look at that value list, then whether they live here or they, they know the reality is that Cook County or not, that, that is a value added, but it is, it is not critical to the core values, the core competencies, their education, their experience, all of those other things. But if I'm having this discussion respectfully with each other, we refine our perspectives. We, we know what our values are. And we have the opportunity to lend our voice to prioritizing those values. Because what we want is somebody that doesn't say, hey, I'm glad I'm here, but what do I do? And then the staff are saying, well, wait, where's, where's the coming alongside and helping me? And creating a culture that people want to stay here. If you look at the interview, you will find a situation that's very similar to our situation in one of the candidates that says, when you ask the question, what is the greatest thing you think you accomplished? Response, I came into an environment where we had a 20% turnover. 20% of our staff were leaving annually. And why were they leaving? Not because they weren't being paid enough. They were leaving because of the culture. That is a hard thing to look at. But we are elected to represent the best interest of our constituents. And hard discussions have to happen. We need to know what the problems are. And if they reflect badly on us, accept that as part of the responsibility that comes with stewardship in representing people. So I'm just saying, when I hear something like that, I want somebody that can change culture. And I knows how to do it, and what's more, has proved they can do it. Thank you.
To Administrator Rowan's, Watkins' comment that number four was one of the top numbers, maybe we should keep four then, instead of one? Or along with one? Now we're increasing the numbers, though, for interviews. How do you feel about keeping number four with number one as a alternate to four? Commissioner Sullivan?
So as I have listened to our discussion and thought about how I've evaluated candidates, the research I did beyond their experience at education, the video and the print materials that we had, I would say the one thing I'm very clear on, and I think all four, all of us are clear on, is that the top four candidates are under consideration. So I would like to make a motion that we recommend for bringing, for an in-person interview, the top four candidates.
Support?
Further discussion, what if one of them drops out? Then we're at three.
I think three is fine.
Just do three? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to take the top four candidates to come to Cook County for interview.
And to clarify, that's candidates two, candidates three, candidates six, and candidate seven.
Correct. Right. There's a lot of numbers running around right now. Any further comment or question on this motion? Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the board's forbearing here. I would like to recommend, Pat, that these candidates that we are confirming for interview, that they be given a core values list to which they need to rate, prioritize their core values as to what's most important to them in, in this leadership role. It's something that we did before and it had value. And I think it's something should be included prior to the interview. And I'd be happy to submit that core values list for them to evaluate. The other question I have is that in, you reference attributes for a leadership position. Unless I missed something in the packet that you forwarded to us, the cognitive, social, team building skills, business and strategic, as far as these attributes, where were they measured? And has the board had the benefit of looking at that evaluation, which was alluded to, but I could not find anything on it?
Some of those values, Commissioner Gamble, would have been in the personality index.
I understand that. I understand that. But if you look at, and you certainly are aware that there's multiple different processes that can be used for interviewing, and so you'll find some commonality. And, and yet, if we, if we have to extrapolate from the work personality index, the attributes for a leadership position, you will find that there are those that are missing, that are not touched on. And that's why I think when you're evaluating, you should be able, you should be evaluating on the basis of core competencies, behavioral competencies, core values, education, relevant experience, character integrity and temperament. Because I can guarantee you that, that when you are looking at the whole person, that you will have a better picture of what expectation is when you're that thorough.
Pat, do you have any comment about that? Another list?
So in our profile, in the profile that we put together, we had a desired attributes, a portion of it. You know, I'm not sure the core values that you're referencing, Commissioner Gamble, that's something that was done previously, correct?
We, we did it in our first interview, Madam Chair, Pat. We, we did not have that listing with the consultant initially, but we went through a much more rigorous process in evaluating. Prior to getting to our final interview, we had two candidates. And that we, we went to finalize with. And then in our second, after we unfortunately lost the first individual that served for one year, then it was included and the consultant said, we didn't have the benefit of this in our first, you know, interview process, but we're including this because this gives us a perspective that doesn't just have to do with the disciplines, it, it addresses this issue of the who. And in my experience, the who is foundational to the ability to deliver on the what.
Commissioner Mills?
I believe.
Go ahead, Pat.
I was just going to say, if there's something that you would like us to do prior to the final interview with the finalists regarding those core values, I think that's certainly something that we can have discussion about and, and work out. If there's some sort of response that you would like from them on those core values, we can certainly have some discussion about how best to have them, you know, do kind of a self-evaluation of, of how they do in those areas. I, I'm certainly receptive to that. Yes.
So if we would submit those to you, then you would need to get them to us before March 5th. They would not be part of our questioning process. We already have the 18 questions. So they would not be a part of that, or how would this fit in?
So what I could do is, once we have a decision made here today, I'll be reaching out to the candidates. I'll be asking them for their references, asking them to authorize a background check. I could have a document of core values. And it could be a kind of a homework assignment that we ask each of the finalists, please, you know, briefly summarize, you know, what are your strengths and what are your weaknesses in relation to the core values listed here. That's something, we can work out the details in the next couple of days so that I can provide them with an additional homework assignment, in essence, to specifically address what Commissioner Gamble is bringing up on those core values. And that would be due back to me one week prior to March 5th so that I can then add that to the information that we're able to provide you as the commissioner so you can see their response to those core values.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Pat, for, for your willingness to work with us here. And thank you, Commissioner Gamble, for, for bringing up your concerns. It would be really helpful if we all had that list. Because right now, it's just, you know, and so, and it would be help, it would have been helpful to have the list, I mean, right away.
I agree.
And what we as a board had as a similar list, although it's not directly evaluated, is the desired attributes. I think that has a lot, and I think Commissioner Sullivan spoke to this, is there's a lot of overlap there with the core values, just from what I'm hearing, because I don't have the list, and what I, what desired attributes list I do have. And then also, there is overlap with that WPI assessment. And so, you know, I think this is important enough that we could take some time now and go through the core values and, and maybe discuss where they do or do not overlap with both our desired attributes and, and how we want that evaluated. And then also with the, the WPI, because I think it covers quite a lot, but, but maybe not everything.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Mills. And I apologize again, and I'm coming sort of midstream in, into this. If there's things that you are privy to or you've had discussions on that, that I'm not aware of, then at least what I'm looking at is the resources I've been given. And I think that the resources that I've been given, and having been such an integral part of the process and two times, and, and it is, I, I need to underscore, and I can't say this strong enough, it is not about me, it is about us and outcomes and processes. And so there are some things that are comfortable to each of us in just how we like to live our lives. But when we choose to be a servant, we lay down those things and we become what we need to be to serve other people. And we discipline in areas that are uncomfortable for us and stretch us, but that comes part and parcel with the responsibility we have. So my point is, is that, again, if, if there's some things that you looked at that I don't, didn't get the information back on, there are holes in my understanding of best practices and everything I know and the inner people that I've interviewed that are highly respected in this position. And part of my charge that I've said, and I, I called AMC on this and wasn't able to get through, but I want to find out the most highly respected, long-term county administrators in our state. And I have a question for them. What are the three questions, based upon your experience and your knowledge, that you think are pertinent to be asked when you're interviewing candidates for this position? What are the three questions? And relative to questions, we've already identified them and we have no ability to change that. We changed questions, the consultant said, we went through a process. Here's the questions we think we need to ask. And then we'd come, and when we came to our last interview, here's the list of questions we've put up. Are there any on there you want to eliminate or any you want to ask? We hadn't had flexibility. We asked the questions that refined through our processes we really felt we needed to ask. So I think they can be suggestive in nature, the questions that exist at this point. Either the number or the specific question should not be limited to compromise, which our end goal is, to make sure that we are mining out the information we need to measure to our set of values identified based upon the input we've received. So I think that's another issue. We are not locked into these questions. We need to make sure that the questions align, are aligned with what we're seeking in the position relative to the values that we identified.
Madam Chair, I guess I wasn't speaking to those questions? Any questions?
No, but I, that's a, because Commissioner Starley's comment. We have the questions.
Oh, oh, I see.
So, yeah.
Yes, we have these. So are you saying that this needs to be readjusted?
Well, I'm saying they should always be open to readjustment. We are not locked into a structure that, that prevents our ultimate, you know, and that's what I'm saying. If there's questions that come up, then we don't want to be restricted by what we have in place. They should, and, and that's why I gave the example. We got to the last interview and we said, the consultant said, you want to change any of these questions? Add or subtract? And we always had that flexibility with the focus on our intent.
Maybe we should look at then, for Pat to have our questions resubmitted along with these or readjusted with these, so we have a final, maybe not so much asking them their core values, but questions that we can ask.
No, no, that's a separate thing, as Commissioner Mills pointed out. That's a separate thing. These are all structures that are best practices to help ensure that we do the best we can as stewards of this responsibility.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I think we have a number. Go ahead, Pat.
Just to clarify, Commissioners, I provided a, a list of questions just as kind of a starting plate. But it was with the expectation that you would be reviewing those questions and you certainly can revise, and, and right up to the day of interviews. You know, we're going to have a set list of questions that we come to, come to the interview day meeting with. But certainly before we start interviews, I'm going to say, are there any last minute changes? Do we want to eliminate? Do we want to, you know, we haven't even gotten to the point where we've said, how long are interviews going to be? Typically, we find them to be about, you know, 50 minutes. But certainly, if, if you want to ask more questions, we can do that. What I'm recommending is what I have found to be successful in other interviews. Obviously, you know, if we're taking a look at, at four candidates, you know, it's four hours of commissioner time, it's four hours of staff time. But yes, we want to put in whatever time's necessary for you to be comfortable and confident. We want other people to be included in helping you to make that decision. You know, the desired attributes, we've got leadership and management qualities. We've got communication and collaboration skills, organizational awareness and team development, ethical leadership and professional integrity, operational and functional expertise. Those are, I believe, what Commissioner Gamble is talking about in terms of being the core duty. So I, I agree with Commissioner Mills that there is overlap. I haven't seen what the core values are, but I believe there is going to be overlap between that and what we have in the desired attributes. People have told me in the past that when people come into interview, it's amazing what a difference, seeing somebody on paper and even seeing them in a video interview, how much different they can be when they actually come in in person. And you meet the person, you're interacting with them. It's not, you know, on a video, but it's in person. There can be, you know, some pretty significant differences in, in your thought process based on meeting that individual. So we will be getting, you know, to the next stage and that's where the questions can be more pointed, more direct. Obviously, we're going to want to ask everybody the same questions, but you're going to really get a better feel for the candidates, the finalists at that point.
Commissioner Sullivan?
So we have several things going on right now, so I'd like to clarify. We have a motion and a second to look at four candidates. I think the first thing we need to do is see if there's any further discussion on that and then take a vote. And then we can discuss the values and the questions.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So we, for, for yes and one no on that question of the four candidates. So moving on then, Pat, would you want us to submit questions to you and you'll reorganize the question list according to our suggestions?
Madam Chair, one of the challenges that I, that I run into is that individuals may have overlapping questions, so if I'm taking them all in and making the changes, it becomes maybe more challenging, whereas if the board as a group could come up with those questions, that way, it just facilitates having agreement on those. But I, I'm certainly open to whatever you would prefer to do. Like I said, if someone comes in with a suggested question, another one has one that's worded a little bit differently, but hits on the same topic, I'm oftentimes kind of found picking and choosing. But if you give me the discretion to do that, I can certainly do that.
Commissioner Mills?
Pardon if I missed this. How many questions would be ideal? I think 50 minutes is an appropriate amount of time. Are we just talking five questions, or 10, or?
I was looking at about 18 questions for a 50-minute interview. About 18 questions is what we have found to be about the right timing.
Wow, that's more than, I've had interviews that have gone longer than 50 minutes with five questions, so I'm, I do have concerns. I also trust your experience there. I just have had different experience, so. Okay, well.
And, and certainly, as we're going through the process, if we do find that we're running out of, of time, you know, we will make a change early on, as long as we stick to that change with subsequent interviews. The first one will be kind of a trial. Okay, can this person make it through 18 questions? Our experience is that it is about three minutes per question.
Well, for instance, one of the questions I think would address some of our concerns is, what does leadership mean to you, and what's the most important, what is most important to you in leading an organization? That really gets to the point of their leadership, and which I think reveals quite a bit of their experience.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the issue of personal interviews and the benefit of personal interviews, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, because a good interviewer is not just listening to the words and the combination of words, they are observing both the, you know, body language, eye contact, and inflection of voice. All of those things are, are telling you something if you know what you're looking for. And one person can walk through the forest and walk out of there and say, yeah, well, I did that. Another person walks out of the forest and says, did you see the ladybug on that leaf? Did you see the color of this? That's because they've learned to be looking, and, and they have an appreciation for, for what they can see if they just pause and do it. So, and in my experience in Cook County, in interviewing, we identified, and I referenced this with the grocery shopping list, we identified, we worked hard, we put together our list, but we lacked the discipline, so that, to the point that you're making, Pat, that there's a lot that, when a person walks into the room, we cannot step away from the structure and the discipline of adhering to evaluating, what we're called to evaluate, so that the charisma, the presence, the color of the suit, or skirt, or whatever else they're wearing, takes us away from the structure we need to adhere to. And it happened. It happened. So that is why, yes, there's huge benefit if we know what we're looking for in evaluating a person, but we have to be careful, that the emotion doesn't supersede all of the other things that we've worked so hard to identify.
So at this point, I would say, if we have any other points, other than what's on the 18 list here, we should submit it to Pat within reasonable amount of time, so that he can readjust that. Is that clear with everyone? That's, if that's what you want to do. It's optional, if you want to add other questions, or things that you think are important. Commissioner Sullivan?
Prior to doing that, I would like for all of us to have the list that Commissioner Campbell has of the values. I think it's important that all of us are looking at the same materials.
Or to add or subtract?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I, I agree, and, and yeah, I think that's a great idea, to have questions passed on to Pat. It, it might be a difficult task, Pat, to, to take some off and add some others. But just, and just to be clear, Commissioner Campbell, you do have the same information as far as what we worked on. This is in the administrative profile, desired attributes, and that was in the email that has the links for all the interviews and everything. It's, it's the ninth page out of 10. So that is what I'm referencing about the overlap with the core values. And then, you know, I do think there'd be value to look at the core values, these desired attributes, as well as the WPI, just to see where things line up and where the holes are, if, if we want to, you know, really get as much out of these interviews as, as we, as we can.
So, Pat, what is the timeframe on any added comments, questions?
If I could have that in the next two weeks, and I will cer, I will send an email out to everybody with kind of a deadline date to get that information back. But we're certainly within, you know, we've got time to go ahead to revise those, and like I said, even up to the day of interviews, if I come in and you want to make a change that morning, we can do that, and we'll just be consistent in applying those changes to the entire group. So, but it would be preferred to have changes, certainly the majority of them made at this time versus the day of the interviews.
Right, right, okay. Thank you on that, just so we know kind of your timeframe, too. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and just to clarify, that the questions, submitting the questions to Pat, and if there's redundancy, or overlap, or whatever, you know, fine, it's, it's the point, the inherent, you know, nature of the question, that we just, we want that included as a question, but however you choose to wordsmith that, that, we're fine with that. And the board, all questions, that, the list will grow with what we have now, and what will we add, but we have the discretion of saying, anything else that came up, or anything you want to eliminate? So we, we aren't losing control of that stewardship of that process.
And so, Commissioner Campbell, then you're willing to send us your list?
Yeah.
Okay, within the next week or so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mills?
This might not be very popular, but I, I, I feel like there's value in having a work session to go through these values, to go through the questions, and, and try to really get as cohesive of a list that we can send to Pat as a group. Maybe we should do it individually. I'm just trying to, trying to be as collaborative as we can.
You're suggesting a work session together, or now you said individually?
Committee of the whole.
Together, is what I was, I was saying, there could be great value in that.
We have committee of the whole next week. We could stay after committee of the whole, or have it be the committee of the whole? We already have a topic. Would that be acceptable to stay after committee of the whole? Because we're all together.
That works for me.
I know there's a meeting at 1:00 for some of you, so, between after the meeting, committee of the whole, and before your next meeting, if that works.
I would just say, based upon prioritizing, and the importance that whatever we might have in conflict, because I don't have my calendar right with me, but that, yeah, I agree, we're there, and timing and importance, yes.
Okay. Okay, so Pat, then we'll, we have our committee of the whole next Tuesday at 10:30, and then we have a topic or two, and then after that, we'll discuss this.
Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
So I won't send out an email. I'll, you have the list of questions, and I will just anticipate hearing something after your meeting next week, then.
Right, okay. Anything else you want to add today?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to go through and, and talk, apologize on taking so much time, but I did want to kind of get your thoughts on reimbursement. Obviously, I'm just taking a look right now at the, at the candidates. We do have a candidate coming from, looks like Oklahoma, and, so that, that would be our furthest-away candidate. Does the board wish to do any sort of reimbursement? This is optional, but it certainly helps, you know, get the candidates there for an interview. What I have seen is sometimes cities and counties will reimburse up to $500 or $1,000 for a flight, lodging, and car rental. Is there any interest in doing so from the Cook County Board?
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pat, I, I would suggest what's normal and customary, just from the stance, standpoint of professionalism and the image that is sent on behalf of the county, but again, that's why it's important for us to evaluate the numbers relative to that commitment financially.
And I would say, if somebody is really interested in this position, they will get here, if it's that important to them. I mean, I really believe that if there is a position that, or a job that, that is a great, that they really are interested in it, by their making the effort to get here on their own dime, makes a difference to me. I know it has been in the past, you would offer them up, you know, up to like $500, and they have the choice of accepting it or not.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I would also like to point out that I believe candidate number seven is from Ohio, so we have two individuals that we would be considering travel for.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes, thank you for the clarification. Correct.
Yeah, it, it's a two-way street, so how much do we want them to interview? You know, it's, it's, how much do they want to interview, and how much do we want them to interview? And so, in my mind, I want to make this as easy and as welcoming as possible, because I really value the expertise that they could potentially bring to our organization. So I don't, I don't, I don't need more hoops to be jumped through. I, I'm looking for, I'm really trying to find the substance of, of the candidate, and, you know, they will be taking time out of their schedule. That's certainly not an easy thing for high-level executives to, to always do, and so, and it's, my understanding is, it is common best business practice when, when you're hiring to, to do that. So I hear what you're saying, skin in the game is important, but I, I also, I also want to make this encouraging.
Commissioner Mills?
And Commissioner Mills, we had 41 applicants for this position. It seems that we are quite a draw for people, and I truly believe that this is a community that has, that is valuable, and is a place where people should really want to be, and that's just, that's just my opinion. I mean, best practices or whatever, but I don't believe everyone's going to go away, because if we are giving travel expenses to those to fly here, then what about those that come from, from other places? We will give them a per diem and motel lodging also. So that's four people that we are, four candidates that we will be giving support to, to get here, so.
Yeah, I think it's money well spent.
Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, I, I would suggest that what's normal and customary, because it, it's, it's the image that's conveyed, but then the other side of that is the financial commitment that we're making, because we're spend, spending other people's money, that I, I think it's important to protect those two values, fiscally responsibility, but a sense of understanding the branding that goes on with every decision you make. And so, to Pat's comment, that if it's normal and customary to offer an, up to a certain stipend relative to, you know, where the individual's coming and what we're compensating, I think that that would, that would protect two values.
I would certainly support that, and I think maybe having a consistent dollar amount for each candidate, so they can choose to use it, whether it be for a flight, or whether it be for a reservation at a hotel here, might be the most fair way to approach that.
Devil's in the dollar, what's that amount? I just Googled flights from Oklahoma, I haven't looked at Ohio, and I didn't look at dates specifically, but it ranged from $260 to $900. A $260 was a, was a faster flight.
We're counting on frequent flyer points.
Maybe, or, or no baggage included, or, yeah. So it just gives a perspective, and Pat, you said it would, there was a range you, you typically see?
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, some are from $500 to $1,000, you know. For some people, if it's $500, maybe you're not covering all their costs, but you're helping out with, with some, depending upon what airfare, lodging, and car rental is. So, yeah, and from $500 to $1,000, and it's reimbursement, so it's not a, you know, you're going to get $1,000. It's a, show us your receipt, and then we'll reimburse you for those expenses. They're also taking time away from whatever their, their current job is, so, you know, and that, yeah, in the end, they're not getting reimbursed for all their time and effort, but it's.
Not moving.
Encouraging.
Commissioner Sullivan?
So I'd like to recommend that we look at $750 to be used for either hotel meals or flight. And I'm thinking of that number in light of what hotels cost here, knowing that this is the ski season, and what kinds of costs there may be. But again, that would be something that would be offered to each candidate. So I'll put that in a motion. I make a motion to allow $750 stipend for each of the individuals who choose to come here for an interview.
Okay.
Support? I would suggest $1,000, if we're talking about the difference of $1,000 for, and that's what the four candidates potentially could be, is a maximum. We're talking about a difference of $1,000 for what the salary is, and the impact it has on our, on our organization, our community, and our, our levy. I think it's a, it's a worthy investment to, to try to make that accommodating, accommodation, and, and encouragement. But I 100% agree with the reimbursement side of things, of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Friendly amendment that in, in the motion, I mean, I, I would agree with the $750, and I would agree with the $750 from the standpoint of just being mindful of the fiscal responsibility and the discipline of how much is out there in making a, a choice. It would be interesting in looking at the receipts, to see what the receipts tell you. So my point is, is that in the friendly amendment, it would be that they will, candidates would be reimbursed up to $750.
And I, I may have misspoken, I thought I said that, but yes. Up to $750 reimbursement.
Can I ask for some clarification? Would that include car rental?
I would say any expenses related to their travel or lodging, meals, and the travel piece would certainly include car rental.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Just having traveled recently for my daughter, and, and knowing the cost of car rentals, knowing the cost of airfare, knowing the cost of hotels, kind of no matter what. knowing the cost of airfare, knowing the cost of hotels, kind of no matter where you go, I'm skeptical that that'll cover it. And maybe that's what we want to do. That's the angle we want to take, is to have a little skin in the game, too. I don't think $750 for, if you do all three of those things, is going to be way off. But I just want us to recognize the reality of what these costs are. Like I said, I think that, to Commissioner Gamble's point about fiscal responsibility, is this is a really wise investment to try to get the best candidate we can, putting the money forward there, and hopefully having that better return. So if we want to go through and see what... I mean, maybe you did, knowing, you, Commissioner Sullivan, you went through and saw what those costs would be. I'm just... I would be surprised if those costs would add up to less than $750.
And I have not gone through them all.
Okay.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Pat, we're going to draw on you again, given, when I look at that list of counties you're consulting and cities you're working with. What is, at present time, normal and customary for a county our size relative to reimbursement? So it's another context in which we understand the decision before us. You could say, if you've got X number of counties, you know, and you're finding that normally it's this, so...
Yeah. I would say, you know, I recently did in Oka County, I would say, you know, they had internal applicants there, but I would say probably $1,000 is the going rate for reimbursement of interview expenses, when you have people coming in from out of state.
And do you make a determination to differentiate between out-of-state and in-state when it comes to that?
Certainly, because the in-state individuals, again, have to provide a receipt or reimbursement. So obviously, you know, what I'm going to say in my communication, if the board does choose to go this way, is that, you know, it's got to be economy class, and, you know, obviously, you know, it's not going to be the Hummer that they're renting. So everything has to be, you know, within reason.
Would we make a distinction between out-of-state and in-state?
Well, that's what I'm saying, Madam Chair, and Pat, is that... And I had made the comment to Commissioner Sullivan, that it would be interesting to take the receipts, and just look at the receipts and see what that tells us. So here's my point. If you make it a blanket, whatever your amount is going to be, that knowing how much I have, I can make a choice based upon where I'm going to spend it. And I would say, you know, for per diem, or expense, if I attended the AMC conference in Bloomington, that that rate, that night, was, you know, it was just under $200 with tax, and they were full, so you couldn't get in. Well, I could get a hotel for the price of just the tax alone. I could get a hotel. So my point is, is that if I've got more money, I can get this hotel, I can eat this, I could rent this kind of car, kind of thing. So it is telling, just because you have the money, how do you choose to spend it? So I understand this seems like crazy conversation, where we've got multiple things that we need to deliberate on, but it is important just to say, well, if you want to take the worst-case scenario, like an engineer would, and build a ramp that will hold when it's full, then you're going to go, and everybody's going to be based upon making that worst-case scenario, which is, how much is it going to cost to fly from here, and hotel, car, rental, everything else? So let's set it at that. But then it'll trickle down to saying, well, when I call and book, I won't call to find out what's the best rate. I'll just take whatever rate, because I got the money. So anyway, I realize this sounds crazy, but...
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. It's just that the cheapest I could find, I think, is going to be $1,000. So that's why I'm like, ah, I think we need $1,000 to make that accommodation.
I appreciate that you, Commissioner Mills, have looked that up. You know, like I say, I did not do that, because I didn't know who our final candidates would be. But given that research that you've done, I would amend my motion to go up to $1,000. But I do agree, Commissioner Gamble, that it's very telling what those receipts would say.
And I'll support that amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have an amended motion that we would reimburse folks up to $1,000 for any expenses they choose to spend it on.
My understanding was car rental, lodging, airfare.
I would also include meals.
Meals, okay, okay. Just so, yeah, just so not the whatever.
Well, those are the basics.
Would you reimburse or mileage at the IRS rate if they're using their personal vehicle?
I think so. I mean, instead of flying, it's...
Well, it's part of the $1,000, or whatever you're going to accept.
Up to $1,000, yeah.
Anything related to their getting here, it's up to whatever you want to do. If you just want to eat one big meal and then pay out of your pocket, that's fine.
Bring a tent.
Buy a tent.
And based on past experience, you know, these individuals are, in most cases, very conservative, and they recognize that it's taxpayer dollars. And I would certainly put that in my email to them, asking them to please try as much as they can to keep costs to a minimal amount. So I haven't had problems in the past, and I don't think anybody is trying to, you know, plan an elaborate weekend to coincide with their interview. So I will do that.
And it is March here, so I don't think so.
Yes.
Nothing elaborate. So are we all clear on the motion? The amended motion up to $1,000, okay? All right. Ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, we have... Pardon? We have four yays and one nay. Okay, motion passes.
The next question, Commissioners, do you want to allow remote interviews? In the past, I have had some candidates ask if they can, you know, participate remotely. My question to you would be, would you really feel comfortable hiring somebody that you haven't met in person, shaking their hand, you know, interacting with them? My recommendation would be to say, no, you're providing the reimbursement, you know, if they are truly committed, they should be coming in for an interview. That's, again, entirely up to you. So...
We are all nodding our heads that they need to appear in person.
Thank you. The next question is, is there anything that you would like to do as part of the interview to showcase Cook County? In the past, when I've had some jurisdictions, whether it be a city government or a county, they maybe have someone who's kind of a historian, who will take them on a bus tour of the community. Maybe you've got a new building, you know, showcase or highlight something within the county. That's not something that you have to do, but it's certainly something that you could do, obviously, at the same time that they're trying to sell themselves to you. You're able to sell yourself to why it's a great place to work at, in Cook County. So any thoughts on that as part of the interview?
I was thinking back to when we hired our last administrator. It was COVID, so we couldn't do anything. And so, I know in the past, we have introduced them, but it all is a timeframe, because if we start, let's say, at nine in the morning, and we have four candidates, that's a lot of time, shuffling them from wherever they're staying. So I think we would need to think about a coordinated effort to perhaps have somebody like Administrator Rowan kind of shuffle people around, or the board members would need to attend the interview. So I think we kind of have to think out what their schedule is. And then, my suggestion, due to time restrictions, too, is informally have our meeting here, like we do with Commissioner, Committee the whole, and have a public meet and greet after that person is hired, both with the, you know, employees, and then a public one later on, depending upon the timeframe of all that. But that day, I think, needs to be kind of thought out, in terms of shuffling the four candidates in a timely manner, because it's going to be pretty much a full day or better. So Commissioner Sullivan, your ideas?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to share with the board a couple of examples of ways that in previous interviews and other organizations, I've seen this handled. One would be, as Pat suggested, a common time for all the candidates to get on a school bus. We'd have to really coordinate with the school to see if that's possible. If not, we'd have to work potentially with Arrowhead Transit. But to have a tour, and on that tour would not necessarily have to be board members that are on that tour, but it could be department heads. And for example, the bus goes to the highway department, and Engineer Haas meets the candidates, talks a little bit about it, and then staff there have an opportunity to interact with the candidates as they're going through the facility. But we could have, you know, Brooke Lassard, for example, take the Y, and Tim Nelson could potentially take the recycle center. But we could think about our facilities and make sure that there's somebody who can meet and have staff interact with the candidates. Another way that I've seen this handled is that department heads each get one candidate and take them around on a tour of, in our case, it would probably be the City of Grand Marais, rather than the entire county, just due to time and distance. But that is a method that I've seen work very well.
Commissioner Mills?
I think it's important, if there is going to be a tour, that all the candidates have a similar experience, and so going with different people would certainly have a different experience. I'm not feeling like a tour is our best use of resources. I think really the interview, and they are free to explore on their own if they have specific questions, maybe we can set something up. I certainly see the value of a tour. I just am trying to weigh our time, exactly, time resources, because if you're driving from Schroeder to Grand Portage up the trail, you know, where do you draw those lines? Which do you show?
City of Grand Marais is what I was thinking.
Yeah, and so that paints a picture, right? But I feel like our community is very desirable, as Commissioner White pointed out, and I think the profile paints a really good picture of our community. So I'm not... I would not be pushing for a tour. I can be supportive of it.
Would there be value in having city representation, city leadership, and Grand Portage leadership to be able to be on the bus, and to answer questions about the greater... About more of the community?
It certainly would be if we go with that model, but we also know that we could have a meet and greet, and we could invite our community-wide leaders to come here, along with the public, to interact with candidates.
Commissioner Gamble?
One of the options other communities have used is the night before interviews. Maybe there's a public meet and greet. Individuals can come to Grand Marais and have, you know, maybe an hour, and meet the finalists. So the finalists would then, you know, come in the day beforehand, get there, get settled, come in for the meet and greet, and then the following day, they would have the interviews and go through that process. That's certainly an option, to span more than just one day, but to hit the evening beforehand, if you'd like.
That seems like a reasonable idea, that they would know to be here the day before, then we would have something here. I don't... I mean, I think the idea of getting on a bus and touring around is okay, but timeframe for interviews really needs to be the interviews.
And then, I really believe the meet and greet, we could maybe do it at the community center, or we do it here. We have light snacks, and we invite the public and everybody in the county who is interested to come and meet these people. And I don't know if people are... If someone's going to fly in, I'm not a big flyer, so I don't know how, at that time of year, well, it's not spring break yet, is it? I mean, I don't... People don't come this way for spring break. But for them to be here the night before, I don't know the timing, but...
That's typical.
Okay, nothing big going on. Yes?
Just one other consideration, as we're talking the logistics of this day. Again, the recommendation from the Personnel Committee, as well as the MAT team, was that department heads have the opportunity to sit in during the interviews. And so, as we're talking logistics, and who will be taking people different places, if that's just... Wanted to bring that up and keep that in mind, that that's the recommendation, and something hopefully that we'll finalize before we get off the phone with Pat.
Right. I think that they can be... They'll be aware of the four candidates, and they can come and go. They don't have to sit in on everyone if they want to, but there'll be a flow if they understand they can be there at certain times.
Okay.
Commissioner White?
Will the... These interviews, will they be public, so the entire... Anyone in the public can come and sit and listen?
Great question.
Yeah, we'll be, just like here. We're recorded.
Yeah, it would be a live stream, I would understand.
So yes, those... When the board is conducting their interviews, those are considered public meetings. An individual from the public could choose to come in and sit in the back room and observe those meetings. They're not there to participate, but they can certainly sit in the back of the room and listen and observe. With regards to staff, we have a couple of different options for involvement. One of those options is for staff to be able to ask their own set of questions of the candidates, and do a separate interview. When the staff does their interview, they are providing input, because it is ultimately the board that makes the decision. So they can have a separate interview of their own with each of the candidates, and then provide input to the board. The board would then look at that input before they make their decision. Otherwise, you know, we're open to, you know, having staff sit in on the board interviews. But if they want to come up with their own questions, more specific to, you know, individual departments and different things, we can certainly work with the county on that, if that's your choice.
Sure, thank you. Pat, if you could maybe provide a little insight on a recommendation to how to facilitate this, but the... At the heart of the recommendations that I referenced were the ability for the MAT team to have the ability to view and listen to the interviews that the board conducts, but then also, before a decision is made, an opportunity to provide some feedback directly to the board. And so that's at the heart of the request from, and the recommendation from, that I mentioned.
Okay. And typically, when we have scheduled interviews, we'll have interviews overlapping each other. So, you know, we'll start the department heads with doing interviews, and their interview may be not the full 50 minutes, but maybe, you know, 35 minutes. And so, the candidates will be coming in, they'll be going to maybe a staff interview, and then to a board interview, and we just kind of run them through that process, with meetings occurring concurrent with one another, just to make good use of time. So the staff can come up with their questions, similar to how the board's coming up with their questions, if the board would like. They can see what the staff questions are of the candidates. And then, they do have an opportunity to provide input, so they're not saying, here's my top candidate, but they're... but they're saying, you know, they're answering questions such as, what strength would this person bring to Cook County? How would this person fit in with the current culture? Those are the input questions that are then shared with the board before they make their decision to help them in making that decision on who they choose to hire or not to hire.
Okay, yes.
I just, I'm getting some feedback here as we're, as we're talking and also just the conversations that we've had before. I, I don't think the MAT team is looking to ask a separate set of questions. I think they're just looking to be
Okay.
in the process where they, where, you know, we're all kind of reading from the same sheet, right? We get to see the questions that were asked and how the person responded and then provide some feedback to the board on, on how those questions and responses landed for them. And so I, I think that's, not to try to complicate the process anymore, but if there can be an opportunity for, we will be live streaming it, it sounds like, and so maybe at the end or, or at some point structured in a point for the MAT team to provide feedback to the board.
Okay. Sure, so that, that makes me think for them to be, you know, actively observing the board interviews is what, is what you're asking for, correct?
Yes, correct.
And then, okay.
And then an opportunity to provide the board with just what, what they saw and what they heard and, and, you know, just provide feedback on their perspective of the interviews.
Okay. Sure, I can work with that and I can share with you kind of what our feedback form looks like. And, and we can adjust as you see appropriate.
And you will be here in person?
Yes, I will, I will be coming up. I will be there in person, so, yes. I will be actually participating with the board as we go through the interview process. I'll be helping keep track of time and just making sure that our, we stick with the questions.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My recommendation would be that we don't have any tours. Our primary focus is to interview and we want to devote as much time, which is a resource, into asking questions and allowing responses. I think that the benefit of a meet and greet is if we want that meet and greet to provide opportunity for citizens to provide feedback prior to the interview, which is problematic, meaning because if it's going to be the night before, then it's, it's a problem trying to get that feedback. So to me, the benefit of a meet and greet is to the extent that you get feedback when people interact with the candidates. So looking at that, I, I would, I would recommend that, that the focus is on the interview and that there isn't a meet and greet and that there isn't any tour and that the MAT team, employees, however that chooses to be, that they would be present, and this is how we've conducted before, not that it has to be that way, but the process we followed is MAT team were invited to sit, public could sit. They don't participate in the questioning, but they are able to observe and listen. The MAT team then meets individually amongst themselves and discusses and then makes a recommendation and a, and an individual that represents the MAT team consensus can come before the board, during the board deliberations, to make the decision, the final decision. If you wanted to elongate it and have the MAT team that sat in on the interview, everybody come and express their convictions, their, their observations and recommendations. I believe it is better and less wieldly to have the MAT team discuss amongst themselves and then their rationale is represented to the board and the representative from the MAT team then is sitting in while we deliberate and make our decision. And then, once you make that decision, at that point, you'd have a meet and greet, introduce, and then you'd do your, here's our town thing with the candidate that you want to make feel welcome and celebrate that. I think that's a focused energy and it's, it's contributing our resources to our objective, which is let's find out, make sure we get the right candidate and then involve those people so that they feel that the, those that are stakeholders have an input into that. And then at that point, introduce to the public and have press release and do the tour.
For the listening public, would you explain the acronym MAT and who's on it? This is a Rowan question.
Management Advisory Team.
Thank you.
It's a team team.
Team, right, you say MAT team.
Yeah.
Like ATM machine.
So, so basically, it's, it's those individuals that are the department heads that represent the, the employees overall. And so given that responsibility and authority and management role as the supervisors in those departments, it's, it's very important that they are part of the process.
I agree 100% with Commissioner Campbell's layout of the process. I, every single, every single point there.
So they will arrive the night before and then we'll have a timeframe. The first one would be here maybe 8:30 and then start going with the departments and then we just progress along the way. Department come here and interview. When they're done being interviewed, they would be
Going and spend part of that money there.
Welcome to go anywhere. Because they would have a car.
And will we be making a decision on that day?
No.
No. Our next, our first meeting in March is the 11th. So we meet everybody on the 5th and the following Tuesday is our first board meeting. So at that time.
Typically, typically what we do, DDA, Human Resources, typically we do have individuals at the end of the day of interviews, we do have a decision. Typically, what happens is we, we get input from, in this case, the MAT team. And, you know, then the, the board has some discussion and typically we do have board authorizing me to work with the, the board chair and another staff member and we jump into negotiations after that. But if you feel that you need more time, we can certainly do that. But we do find, after the day of interviewing, that there is typically, you know, an individual who stands out is being kind of an ideal fit for the city or county. And so we do keep kind of things moving because again, the more time that, that's taken up, you know, if they've got other applications out there, et cetera, we try and kind of get you lined up so that we have a tentative agreement within a few days of making a decision. So, but you let me know what Cook County is comfortable with and I'll work with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, just look generically at processes. I, I think that it's beneficial after having the interviews that there is time for deliberation and certainly time for the MAT team. And, and I think that when you go through a full day of interviewing, you have to look at our humanity. And, and I think, again, we need to be mindful of everything that it is that contributes to us being in the best position to making a decision. And if you feel whatever, and it's, it's realities. And sometimes you look at things that just seem really quirky that organizations, sports teams or whatever do, but they're intentional because they understand that there's vulnerabilities that comes with trying to pack everything in. My recommendation is that, that we would have the interviews and the fresh information that we have. We, we can digest that and then come back in a, in a short period of time with the MAT team being able to have their deliberation so that they aren't rushed. And then, again, in that short period of time, catching our breath, we come back and we've freshly approached things based upon what we've learned. The importance, if you take that format, is to make sure that the notes, the impressions that you have, that you've documented that well enough individually as MAT team or whomever, so that, that you aren't forgetting those key points that you're connecting to. But when you get into that discussion following the interview, at some point following, not the same day, you will, you'll be in a better position to look at that. And it, it's just also something else that it takes the emotion out on many fronts and the fatigue issue and gets you focused on the discipline, back to what we need to do. So my recommendation would be that we would not make a decision that day, but that we would have a timeline that directs the MAT team and commissioners to do their, their homework and then to meet and make that decision and then contact Pat relative to making and negotiating an offer, if in fact we get to that point.
So we're meeting on a Wednesday. Would you recommend the next day?
I think the next, next day would be, be fine.
The next morning.
Yeah, and that fatigue is real. I have a very distinct memory of it and, and I want to recognize that. I hope that it's going to be maybe an obvious thing or we'll have a decision that same day, but I think practically, realistically, expecting the next day is, is, is the way to go.
So, Madam Chair, Pat, I don't know that it's necessary to, necessary to make a motion if, if, but if we want to make a motion as to process, I think we've had the discussion and then it can be outlined based upon the notes of what we discussed. And if, Pat, if you have the information and intention based upon this discussion and you're ready to move forward, then I think we're fine.
Is that agreeable to you, Pat?
Cell phone died.
So the decision and discussion was to make our decision the next morning on the 6th?
Yes, yes, that, I can certainly accommodate that and I will put together a schedule with, with those understandings laid out in, in the schedule. I will be working then with Rowan and Allison to put together the schedule and, yeah, we'll, we'll have everything all planned out so that when you come in on March 5th, you'll have folders, you'll have information and everything will go very smoothly that day for your interviews. And then the following day, Thursday, March 6th, then you can have more discussion and make a determination at that point.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Sullivan?
I just think we should make a motion and determine the time because I know this room is used at a certain time on that day. So I'd like to make a motion to begin deliberations at 8:00 AM on Thursday, March 6th.
We have a motion to reconvene the morning of March 6th at 8:00 AM. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
What is the, what's the conflict, potential conflict?
At noon, there is another meeting in here for two hours. So I want to make sure that we have plenty of time to, and they need to set up for that meeting. So I want to make sure we have all the time we need.
How much, how much time for setup?
Half hour.
I think 8:30 would be fine.
That's what I was wondering.
I'd say 8:30, 8:30 would be fine.
All right, I'd be happy to amend.
Okay.
And support.
Okay, we have amended motion to meet the morning of March 6th to make our decision at 8:30 AM. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for your time this morning. I didn't mean for it to go on so long, but I think that you've been very thoughtful and you've put together a great plan for interviews. So I will be working with the four candidates and keeping the county informed if there's any changes. But we'll be putting together that schedule and looking forward to March 5th.
Thank you so much for your time this morning, Pat.
Thanks, have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Will the public be here on that Thursday morning to listen to us?
No.
Okay.
Oh, it's a public meeting.
It has to be a public meeting.
I think it has to be for all five of us.
So they'll be there when we make the final decision? I mean, I've been in that dis-
I think it has to be.
I mean, if it, if it has, has to be, I think, I think we maybe had two people that
Yeah.
that did show, show up that morning, but yeah, in keeping with the open meeting.
Yeah.
So they have the opportunity to be there during the interview as well as the final deliberation.
Okay.
And sure, can I ask, when you made the financial decision on $1,000, was, that vote was for in favor and, and what was the, who was the main vote?
Commissioner Lewis is the name.
Okay.
Then we'll go on to item number nine, report from Administrator Updates.
Madam Chair, we missed one from HR.
Oh, sorry.
Approved, I'll leave. Moving on to HR. Thank you. All right, let's see. We're going to talk about bringing forth some job descriptions and job grade updates as part of our job description and review process that we are conducting with DDA. Different subset of DDA than our administrator search. So it's been a while, I think kind of it was quite over the holidays, but getting back to it and hopefully trying to wrap this process up here within the next month or so. So I have a fairly larger batch to bring to you today. So included in the agenda packet and on the kind of cover memo, there are a total of eight positions that are either job description updates, maybe with or without a, a grade change. Sorry, collecting my thoughts. So I'll just kind of summarize those positions for you today that are included. So we have some leadership positions that are kind of the first few bullet points. We've got the Auditor Treasurer position. That one, the grade was reviewed and is determined to remain currently at a 240, where it currently sits. We've got the County Attorney. That would be a change in the job grade from a 250 to a 260. History on that one, the end of last year, given the transition with Molly Hicken and looking to recruit an individual to fill the remaining term for that elected position, hence Jane Peterson, we did draft a job description for that and approved it at that point with the job grade staying at a 250. But that one, we held off on reviewing the grade given the conversations that we went into with the potential movement for our leadership positions and looking at adding that 270 grade. So we took care of the job description because we had to recruit for it and then went back to reviewing the grade. So just history on that one, that we are now at that point of reviewing the grade. The County Sheriff position, a change in a job grade. Currently it's at a 240, recommending it move to a 260. I do want to add a couple of notes on the Auditor Treasurer and the County Sheriff positions. So these, these are elected positions. Historically, just like with the County Attorney, where we created a job description. Historically, we don't have job descriptions for elected positions. Most of what they do is mandated, directed by state statute. And that's not uncommon to not have job descriptions. In my counterparts in other counties, they also don't have job descriptions for that. So that's why there are none that are included in that, in the packet. Then we have the Victim Witness Coordinator/Paralegal. That includes an updated job description, recommendation that the job grade remains at a 160. We have our Lead Dispatcher, Public Safety System Specialist. That also includes an updated, updated job description, recommendation that the job grade remains at a 170. We have our Soil and Water Conservation District District Manager and Watershed Planner, also includes an updated job- an updated job description, recommended change in a job grade from a 190 to a 200. We have our Aquatic Invasive Species Supervisor. Includes an updated job description and a change in a job grade from a 170 to a 180. And last, we have our Assessor Appraiser Trainee position. Includes an updated job description and a change in job grade from a 130 to a 150. Also to note that that Assessor Appraiser Trainee, that's like a tongue twister right there, Assessor Appraiser Trainee position is not currently filled, but it is an active job description as potentially it may be filled again in the future.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I'd just like to share with the board, as Director Plummer was talking about job descriptions for elected officials, the Personnel Committee did create a job description which has been approved by that committee for County Commissioner. That will be coming forward to you at some point in the near future.
And a grading?
Just to thi- no grading, but just to be in alignment so that all those elected positions do have a job description.
Any questions for Allison?
I'll make a motion to approve the job descriptions listed with the job grade updates.
I'll second that. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison, again, coming in midstream on all of this. When a job description is created and it has, when you hire somebody, come in, normally when you're hiring somebody, they come in and you've got your, your range and you hire based upon experience and what they bring to the position. So when somebody's scored at whatever grading it might be, that it doesn't automatically ensure that they're going to be paid at that grade. It's all subject to the experience of what they bring to the job. So they're going to be within a range. Or is it just that when you do the grading, that you have set that wage and that's what they're going to get when they come in?
So there's two things involved with determining the pay that someone is offered when we are looking at bringing on new hires. So when you look at our pay table, we've got two factors. We've got the grade and we've got steps. So the grades that I list on here is basically the row, the pay scale from beginning step to last step, that someone would be paid for that position. I think what you're maybe referring to is where we start them on the steps for that specific grade. So typically, when we look at the initial offer, looking anywhere from maybe a step one up to a step three, given any other pertinent information, experience, education, et cetera, that we want to consider in starting them off at a higher step. Typically, we try to start people off at a step one, which would be the low end, that beginning wage for that grade.
And thank you for that. If, if there's a matrix in place that makes the determination and having said on the Personnel Committee, when the Personnel Committee was different, we didn't have Human Resource Director. So Commissioners and those that participated on the Personnel Committee, the department heads would come in, we would evaluate, you know, their job description, if it was revised by the department head, and, and then based upon the matrix, which was a discipline, we would set where they were going to be. And it seemed invariably that then job descriptions were written in order to reach a certain level as opposed to what actually we're asking, you know, the employee to do. And so that's why the discipline of the matrix is hugely important in that evaluation. It's not subjective. When it comes to the hiring and you're assessing based upon your matrix, then you set that and that should be fair and reasonable. The other, the other thing is that if we, we go as high as 260 and now we're saying 270, what informed the 270? And if in fact 270 is where we choose to set that top, then that is going to have a ripple effect in what it does to every other employee because we've now raised the bar. So what informed that 270 needs to be made in that context of understanding the effect overall and the need to justify the 270.
So there is a matrix in place. We contracted, hired DDA to go through and do the job description review process for us. That includes reviewing the job descriptions. They are basically in charge of the language. They choose the language to make sure that it is consistent. That's why we don't have individual employees or department heads writing and drafting their own job descriptions because there can be differences in the languages used. So DDA, TESSA that I work with, with DDA, is responsible for creating the job descriptions to again ensure that consistency in templates, information used. And then we utilize the Keystone Factoring System for that matrix of how positions are graded. And there's five factors involved in that. And within each factor, there's a rating point system to determine points, which then equate to a total score, which then equate to where those total points fall on a scale. Again, there's no matrix when it comes to determining what step we offer somebody. That is a management discussion usually between the County Administrator and HR. And that ensures that departments are, again, consistent with organizational practices of where we start people off to ensure there aren't inequities amongst the offers coming from different departments. So that was something that was kind of instilled when James was here over like the last year. When I came on, was really kind of taking ownership and oversight of those initial offers, again, steps within the grades. I was going to address your second part of the question.
270.
Totally blanked out.
Yeah, that's right.
So the 270, so we went through a lot of discussions last year, at the end of last year. In the job description review process, we, we were, let's see, over a two-year period of time. So this was what followed 2024. I mean, so we're pretty much wrapping up the review process. We're going in a little past two years now. But going through that process, we had reviewed most of the non-leadership positions. And there was indication, and I think a lot of individuals could kind of see a lot of those positions being graded and creating upward pressure on our leadership positions. So now we're getting into our leadership positions and our matrix that we use has a grade 270, has always, always represented a grade 270 in those materials. And then it became apparent of like, well, there's a reason there's a 270. We don't know why it was left off. It was a decision made at some point to not represent, to have that 270 represented on our pay scale. But going through the process and having positions being graded higher, putting that upward pressure on our leadership positions, and then taking into account our benchmark counties and the data related to those benchmark counties, it became apparent that we needed to add that 270 in to be consistent with the pay philosophy that the county said that we would follow going into the job description review process. So added the 270 created ability for those upper tier, those upper tier positions to have that movement as well. And again, then to really not create that bottleneck that was created by other positions and grades coming up through, through this two-year process.
Okay, Madam Chair. Allison, I appreciate your response. I would say that whatever system you put in place, that, that the fundamental concepts that inform that decision, that benchmark where you are, is going to drive everything beyond that point. And I, I personally and from its constituent standpoint and having been part of the process in, in doing our comp study, I challenged that the comp study through Keystone initially was credible because of what it didn't include in comparables. And when I said, well, if Keystone's not going to do it, I will do it. And then the County Administrator at that time says, no, that's something I should do, which, there was no follow-through on that. But I did do comparables in looking at things. And the credible, credibility of the last study is highly suspect. And if I go through, and Commissioner Martenson and myself in the first term, we spent unbelievable amount of time trying to make sure that we were doing comparables on multiple issues relative to like counties, multiple issues, so that you were comparing apples to apples. And there was a reluctance on the board to want to evaluate that. And that's where I think, again, integrity and credibility, and I think from a county administrator position, if that's the direction that we're going, that that county administrator, this is why I go to core values. If integrity in processes, integrity in who I am as a person, if being willing to deal with pushback on issues, that, that's all predicated on the who that sits in that position. So there needs to be agreement that, that we are in fact evaluating things on a premise that is rightly positioned, benchmark, whatever you want to call it. So I, I challenge, I challenge the benchmark. That's, that's my position, so.
And you have every right to have that position. I was not involved in that process. This was prior to my time being in a leadership director level role. But from my understanding is that there was quite a bit of due diligence in that process. There was a committee created. There were representatives from multiple different levels from this organization, including Commissioners, Department Heads, other staff. And from what I, from what I know is that they did a lot of research and they spent a lot of time in determining those benchmarks to ensure that there is an apples-to-apples comparison for what can be. Every county is very different. But looking at multiple different indicators of data that would be very comparable to Cook County and determining that pay philosophy going forward and how we look at job descriptions, our grading, our pay. Ultimately, it was also then presented and approved by the board. So I would say that that has some indicator of approval of that process. But again, I would have to defer you to, to others that were involved in that process and how that went.
And Madam Chair Allison-
At some point, there will be another opportunity potentially to look at those benchmarks.
Yeah. And so what I would say again is, I'll use an analogy. Whatever I choose in ingredients is going to determine what the outcome in the entree is going to be. And so it's, it's critical that we understand what ingredients we're going to throw in because whatever we put in the oven, it's going to end up being what it is based upon the ingredients. So the analogy here is, when you look at comparable comparisons, having been part of that process and having a consultant that said, here's our list of recommended comparables, and we as Commissioners could adjust those, we did adjust them because they, they weren't comparable. And we had no problem. Once we've got those ingredients in place, then we knew moving forward. Process is process, but whatever you put into that process is going to determine outcomes. So I said, I would say from the standpoint of, of credibility to a process and integrity in process, that it should be provable multiple different ways. And that's, that's what basically the public wants to know. The public wants to know is, has that, those primary fundamental values been protected in this process? And having been part of that and, and seeing what we've seen in the last few years, that's why I say I'm, I, I challenge, I challenge our outcomes. They're predictable. But anyway, I appreciate your listening and, and my, my commitment is, and I don't think we need a consultant to make the comparables, knowing what it is we're looking for. And, and I did a study of comparables and the counties I talked to said, wow, send me that because nobody's doing it this way. Anyway, so again, it's not about me. It's just, it's about focus on, on our stewardship of responsibility. So thank you for listening and your input.
Any other questions for Allison? Thanks so much for bringing all of this up to date and almost successful. Almost getting there. Thank you. Now we'll move on to-
Call the question.
We need a motion.
We have a motion in a second, I believe.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The votes say sign. Motion passes four to one. Administrator Updates?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, the big ones that I continue to provide updates on, top of the list, Administrator Hiring Process. I think we're, we're well up to date on the process there. The LEC Edition Project, we continue to work with BKV and our design team and we are happy to report still on schedule and plan to have BKV and Henry here to provide the board with an update on the process and a schematic design of the Law Enforcement Center expansion and all of that it entails, including options and considerations around deferred maintenance that exist within there and, and the pros and cons of all of that, as well as some detail on when we would be able to get some numbers from our construction manager at risk, Johnson Wilson, on that project as well. Another one that I've mentioned is the immediate space needs and a, and a project that our Facilities Director, Brooke Lassard, is working on for a redesign and creating some office space in the basement of this building. And we have a, a design that we've shared and I believe now we have received, or Brooke has received numbers. I haven't seen them yet, but we're, we're working on finalizing that so that ideally, I believe, still this month, maybe as well on the, on the 25th or, or maybe now time limiting, early March, we will bring forward a proposal and a, and a consideration for the board of the work that we would do. Again, another project that is intended to address the immediate space needs as well as accomplish some deferred maintenance and including mold remediation for a mold problem that has been discussed several times and was down there. And then lastly, the, the transfer station. Auditor Treasurer Powers made mention of, of some of the deals, the ordinance that needs to happen there. And then we're in works on the contract ends as well with the, the use agreement and, and the other components that are there, as well as having follow-up meetings with Land Services and the Highway Department to make sure that the location and the permitting process for our satellite shops, which are both next to Highway Department shops, Tofti and Hovland, respectively, get laid out in a, in a way and can be permitted in, in a way that they need to. So good, good work continues to move those projects forward. And I, no, no major concerns or red flags from anybody involved that, that I would bring forward to the board today. So just in summary, everything's moving along as, as good as it can. I stand for questions.
Thank you on the update. And there's no questions or comments. We'll move on to Employee Concerns, Commissioner Concerns, Reports. Meeting Updates, anything specifically right now that we need to know about? Commissioner Sullivan?
Surely, thank you, Commissioner, or Chair Starlee. Cook County Invasives Team met on January 29th and they just, I had mentioned they had events at the brewery and for a weed pull on Gunflint Trail, but they did secure the dates for those events. So at Voyager, it will be June 21st, which is a Saturday, and the weed pull on the Gunflint Trail, Wednesday, July 23rd. And then many of us attended both NACO and AMC Zoom Meetings recently to discuss the implications for counties related to federal changes that are occurring and also related to the governor's budget. And just general recommendations, prioritize your issues. And just general recommendations, prioritize your issues, be realistic, and breathe, just wait for information to come our way. On January 30th, Firewise met and both Brady along with Mike Keport are really busy dealing with billings that have come in towards the end of the year, so I appreciate all their efforts on getting that up to date. February 4th, we had our hazard mitigation meeting. I know Commissioner White attended that along with me and it was really great to see the large number of people in attendance from Grand Portage to other organizations here in Grand Marion throughout the county to really look at, how do we prioritize those hazards, natural disasters that may occur? And then what do we see as immediate issues? And we talked a little bit about the grade and the fact that there's a bridge out there and how do we deal with that? But there's a very comprehensive packet that was put out and a lot will depend on what goes on with FEMA as far as we move forward and what grants might be available. But I really appreciate Mike Keport's leadership with that initiative. That's done every five years. MCIT has a series of meetings on Zoom that are part of open meeting law. I would just encourage people, if they haven't been able to attend those, to look at the recordings, but it's very, very good. It's a four-part series. Soil and Water Conservation District met, talked about funding implications. Currently, the aquatic invasive species budget is cut by 50%. That is the proposal and SWCD would be impacted in 2026 by reductions. So they were just laying out funding implications. The Rainy Headwaters Vermillion River One Watershed One Plan has met. That was just an organizational meeting. I'll continue to chair that group, but we brought on new members and just kind of did an update of where we're at at this point. Those are going to be quarterly meetings now rather than monthly. And then it was really fun last Saturday. We had the Gunflint Trail mail run. Half the county was up watching the sled dogs and it was a great event, good community builder and nice to have snow, that we could have that event. So that was appreciative. And lastly, yesterday, there were three of us attending the legal land use training that was provided. Neva Maxwell brought in Jay Squires and talked a little bit about case law and its impact on some of the decisions. So there are packets, I know that other commissioners who are unable to attend did receive this morning. And those would be my updates.
Anyone else? Commissioner White?
Two things. We had a, well, the hub, marketing, this is marketing now, they are having a Love of the Pasty sale. You can preorder until Thursday, they're $8 apiece and it's a fundraiser for them. Anyway, there's that. But the other thing was that Commissioner Gammel and I had a town hall meeting on Saturday, 10:30 to 12, and a number of people, I don't remember the number.
Little over fifty-seven.
People.
Fifty-one.
Came and the discussion focused on the administrator, the process, the hire, the history. And I would like, and it was, it was not wistful, but it would be, this is controversial, but I, they, they, as in they, the public that was speaking, would like to have an opportunity sometime to have more than just two commissioners at a time do a town hall meeting. Now, I understand that, professional, Commissioner Starlee goes to the town halls on the West End and does that. And we put out a lot of different information in different venues, but it was astounding, disappointing, sad, that there were people that expressed ignorance about the addition on the Law Enforcement Center and on the, what was the other thing that I thought?
Transfer.
Transfer station. So anyway, since the beginning, I have, I really like, I like doing the face-to-face, doing that and building trust and hearing from, and even when I can't give a answer, I just get to listen to people, which, there's value in that. And so if, how would it be? Here's my question. Because I intend to have more town, offer more town hall meetings, like the engineer, the highway engineer will be coming, because it's the Arrowhead Trail, he'll be coming within, he'll be coming out to, in March, we'll see what the temperatures are like, but either the Hovland Town Hall or the Colville Town Hall. The Hovland Town Hall is the big dance hall and it's really hard to heat. And so to save money, we heat the smaller space at Colville then, and it's close enough. But to put it out as a possibility that maybe there'll be a quorum there and if anybody wants to show up besides me, they can and we don't have to worry about having a quorum at a meeting. So there was that question, if, how, does anyone feel about that? And as far as the expenses go, every town hall that I've had, and this has not cost the taxpayer or the county anything, I have paid for everything, every meeting out of my pocket, from the rental to advertising, to whatever else we had, the food. So I would be willing to put that announcement in the newspaper also, but to just maybe have a chance for more people to show up and interact with the community if it worked into their schedules.
Commissioner Gammel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner White. Yeah, it was in tension, actually, I had checked on various locations because I was looking to be able to find out facility availability in all five districts. And then we as commissioners, we would be able to make it convenient for people in that district to show up and all five commissioners could be there to field questions and to listen, primarily, it's a listening session. And looking at it, we'd be able to post that so the public could be aware, but because of the timeline of things moving as they were, it was trying to find something and then I had checked with Jeannie just to find out, to make sure, because we wanted to be in compliance and want to be respectful. And so in the future, if we choose to do that in our districts and make it so that all commissioners can be there to answer questions, that can be done as long as it's posted. And so there are some counties that will do annual surveys from their public, just to find out, how are we doing, where we're at, and assess performance, just like we should have, you know, annual reviews of all employees. It's what we can do to come alongside and help, how we can support and how we can learn to be better in behalf of the stewardship responsibilities entrusted to us. So the willingness to ask, the willingness to provide opportunity outside of the limitations of our timeline here is a no dialogue. This allows them to dialogue and to listen and there certainly needs to be parameters so that it's healthy, but we shouldn't let it get to the point where it's so pent up that that's an issue. There will always be individuals that are not happy with something that, but the parameters are there, create the opportunity, and if it happens, you can let off steam on a regular basis as opposed to waiting how long to do it. But we should look at how we allow stakeholders to inform our decisions from staff's standpoint, from our experience as elected officials, and from the public's standpoint, so.
I would just offer, and thank you for your report, I would just offer that the first part of March, we're going to have a discussion on communication, procedure, and policy.
Okay.
On these kinds of meetings.
Yeah, that's good.
That's all I want to say right now.
Okay.
Can we move along? Anybody else?
I have one thing about the BKV group, we'll be meeting on Thursday, and I think there would be great value in having another commissioner participate or at least sit in, maybe not on every one of them, but just to get a feel for what is being proposed more than just me.
This Thursday at what time? Did you say this Thursday?
Yeah, it's this Thursday, Roman is a.
It's this Thursday.
Yeah.
At 11:00. 11:00 to 2:00.
It'd be available.
That's in the ITV room, here at the courthouse.
Anything more?
No.
Okay. So we have upcoming meetings to note listed here. Just a reminder to the public, Monday, the 17th is President's Day, so the courthouse is closed. And just, we added on our legislative meetings coming up the end of the month, 25th to the 27th. And we have the lodging tax comparison through November 24th in our packet. And we have February staff anniversaries. Julie Burgland, Temporary Office Support Specialist, one year. Rico Rivera, Public Health and Human Services, one year. J.D. Cool, Radio Communication Analyst, three years. Karen Christensen from the Veterans Service, three years. Nick Honer from the Auditor's Office, three years. Kathy Ann Travis, Attorney's Office, six years. And Tim Nelson from Land Services gets 26 years with us, which has been wonderful to have him aboard that long to help us out in that area. And no further business, I will ask for adjournment motion.
It's moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for all of your attention and so forth. Sniffs in here now. Could you stand up and just look through that and let everybody else have a?
Sure.